Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Monday, March 18, 2024. We are pleased to have you all tonight, both here and watching from home on Zoom. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell, here. Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Mayor Laura Sella.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
President.
You have a forum.
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in recognition of our servicemen and women serving both at home and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thanks again for coming. We are pleased tonight to have a business showcase as part of our proclamation and presentation section of the evening's agenda. And so I think we have a video, but I'm going to ask Gerald and Jamie Pence to join me at the podium up here, and then we'll kind of chat a little bit about their incredible business, Casamia Italian Restaurant. And do we have a video tonight as well? We do. So come on up. I'll say a few kind words about your lovely place, and I'll let you guys chat, and then we'll play the video. Well, we are always pleased here in the city of Lakewood to celebrate our local businesses. And certainly, we mean business. Economic development is a team sport, but we rely much on the incredible work that our local businesses do every day. Gerald and Jamie Pence grew up in the Aberdeen-Hochland area, near the original Casamia. In fact, Gerald lived only two blocks away from the restaurant. As a teenager, working at the restaurant as his first job, now the Pences have been in local business as owners in Lakewood for over 21 years. When asked what he was most proud of with their own business, Gerald said his staff members, specifically the young people that come work for him. Once a high school student himself working at Casamia, it's clear that Gerald's understanding of the importance of that first job is experience and mentorship. The city of Lakewood thanks both Gerald and Jamie for this attitude and for the positive impact they have left on Lakewood over the last two decades. And I can say from personal experience, having greeted many of the young folks that work in your restaurant, it's certainly been a wonderful atmosphere that you've created. The food is obviously tremendous, and every time I go there, I eat too much. But it is an incredible place, and we really appreciate all that you're doing for the city of Lakewood, both for the patrons and for the youngsters that enjoy working there. So proclamation there, our business showcase. Casamia recognized as the March 2024 City of Lakewood Business Showcase because of its hard work and dedication over the past two decades and its commitment to giving back to the community by passing down positive experiences to Lakewood youth. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So we'll play the video and then let you guys have a chance to say a few words.
My name is Gerald Pence, and our business is Casamia Italian Restaurant. My Casamia journey kind of started when I was in high school, and me and my wife both grew up in the Hochland-Aberdeen area down in Grace Harbor County. And the original Casamia was in Hochland. Fortunately, for me, it was about a block or two from my house. So when it came time that I could get a job, when I was 16, my first job was at Casamia. And so that's kind of how I learned how to do the Casamia business. I'm proud of the staff members and the longevity of the staff that we've had. We've been really blessed with having good young people. And a lot of them, you know, use this as a place to start on their way to college, out of high school. Another thing that I'm really proud about in our business is that we make a lot of our own sauces and dressings from scratch in-house. We make our dough daily, spaghetti sauce, fettuccine sauce, our salad dressings. And we make those from scratch in-house, and I'm proud of that. How many pizzas on a busy day? Pizza's on a busy day? Probably, probably a good hundred or so, anyway, I'd say. Lakewood's community is part of this greatest business over the 27 years that we've been here. And also, in addition to them, University Place, people, Furcrest, and the city of Tacoma are all excellent about supporting this. Thank you all for recognizing our business, and we're happy to be here today.
Fabulous. All right. We're just happy that you're making dough, making dough.
Trust, you're related?
That's fun. Well, it's always fun recognizing our longstanding businesses in the city of Lakewood, especially those that impact youth, as well as Casamia has done over the years. So now we turn to the public comments section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments can be submitted in advance by mail or email to the city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, at 6,000 Main Street, Southwestern Lakewood, or by email to B. Schumacher, at cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour in advance before the meeting have been provided to all of us at City Council electronically, but for purposes of transparency, the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments to us in advance.
Mayor, we receive no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Very good. Virtual comments are also welcomed. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comments, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782. Enter the meeting ID number, usually it's on the screen, but it's 868-7263-2373, and then use the raise the hand feature. So tonight, I will first call on those who are appearing via Zoom or by phone, and please raise your virtual hands so that we can call on you to speak. And then that will be followed by anyone who has signed in the sign-in sheet or is physically here in council chambers. So first I see is Christina Manetti.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. This is Christina Manetti from Lakewood. And there are just a few things that I wanted to mention or bring up. I noticed in the agenda for this week that the minutes, the way that the minutes are taken, has changed, and I'm not sure when that happened, but I just noticed it now in the current agenda. And now, when, for example, Mr. Haugen speaks or spoke, it just says that he was speaking on items not on the agenda. And then when I had comments, it just said that I was speaking on some item on the agenda, but it didn't say anything about what I said, or even whether I was speaking in favor or against the item that I was commenting on. So I was just wondering, I know that you're not going to answer me now, but it would be nice to find out why this change took place, when it took place. Maybe somebody could let me know. And I suspect maybe it was just to help Ms. Schumacher have fewer, you know, responsibilities so that she would be freed up for other things. But I think it is important to mention in the agenda, or rather, in the minutes from the meetings, what people speak about, because I know that you might say that people who are interested can just go and watch the video, but it's hard to expect that people will just be sitting through, you know, they don't know where to look, they're gonna have to sit through everything, when they could just look at the minutes, which are supposed to summarize what happened, including the public comments. So I'd like to request that the summary method of, you know, conveying the content of public comments be returned. Maybe it doesn't have to be very extensive, of course, but at least, you know, the gist of what somebody's saying, or at least if it's positive or negative, if it's on a certain matter. You know, I think it is important because public comments, you're upholding public comments, you're not curtailing anybody's ability to speak by Zoom, which is excellent, of course, especially since I'm speaking by Zoom. But it would be nice if you would maintain that kind of record in the minutes that would enable members of the public to see what was said if they're interested, without having to go and watch the actual video. I also wanted to mention, there are some things on the park, the topic of the parks that you have on the agenda today, and of course, I'm running out of time. But I just wanted to ask that you reconsider the matter of the tensor log, if it's going to be glassed in there. I think it's in great danger of being shot up, so I don't think you're going to include bulletproof glass. Maybe that's not the best idea. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and appreciate the comments about the content on the meeting minutes. That makes good sense. Mr. Dunlop, James Dunlop.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, my name is James Dunlop. I'm a resident of Lakewood. I would like to concur with what Christina Manetti has said. I think the thing about the public comments is that, you know, they are actually a matter of historical record, and I believe you can search public comments, you know, going back since, you know, when the city became a city. So you've got, you know, you've got, I don't know, 20, nearly 30 years of public comments. And it is important to be able to look back at what people were saying. For example, I don't know, in 2001, when you went, you know, the lot sizes, but you could, you know, when there was a change in the lot, in lots, in the lot size in terms of cutting down trees, for example, you could see what people were saying in 2001, and you can also see what people's concerns were in 2001. And you actually see that people had similar concerns. And I think that it does, I think, perhaps, I think you actually understand, you do need to have that as a matter of record. It's also a way, if someone disagrees with something the city does, and they have no way of obviously changing the city's mind, to at least have on record their disagreement. So, but it's there. So that's the first point I'd like to make. Second point is about uplighting. I believe you are continuing with your plan to uplight at the Colonial Center. Now, nearly a year ago, I think I sent, I think I sent Mary Dodsworth and a scientific article on the problems of uplighting. And it would seem, as far as I know, that best available science would suggest that uplighting is not desirable in terms of not just the health of the trees, but also the health of, the health of, you know, animals using them, and the fact that there's a natural disturbance in the rhythm of day and light. I mean, it seems to me that, you know, you have the, an oak, as, you know, it's a city tree, the Gary Oak, yet you seem to be treating the trees as adornments, as things that humans can do whatever they like with, as something amusing, like toys or something. And I don't think this uplighting idea is appropriate. And as I said, best available science would suggest that it's not a good idea. Finally, if I've got time, I was slightly disturbed by the enthusiasm that some city council members were expressing for this new baseball pitch in Fort Stilliken. You know, there is the science on the safety of that fill, and the rubber fill, and it's, and how carcinogenic it is. Particularly, there's a lot of evidence that goalkeepers are particularly vulnerable for suffering, for getting cancer. And remember, you're using, your children will be using this. I think you haven't looked through the science. Just because there's no evidence, definite evidence that it causes cancer, it doesn't mean that you should just go ahead. So I think you should give that more consideration.
Next, Tukumir Dunlop.
Oh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, I'd just like to make a quick comment about the consideration for the Barnes &amp; Noble in the shopping center to be potentially redeveloped into an apartment building. I just like to say, in terms of whether or not this is a good idea, like, if this, if it were to be turned into an apartment building, you'd obviously have all of the extra traffic into the shopping center, which is already quite congested. The shopping center is built on top of a creek, and there's already a lot of runoff that's going into the creek. So obviously, all the cars, you know, people going in and out of the apartment building would increase runoff. But the most concerning thing is that I don't think there has been any, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any motion to do a SEPA checklist to determine environmental impact for this. And obviously, there would be environmental impact, because having more cars going into an area where runoff is exceptionally damaging due to the creek, it's, you know, it's something that needs to be considered. So I just want to point out that I don't think this is a very bad idea. It seems like a kind of a ridiculous place to have an apartment building. And yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. That's the last person I see with a virtual hand raised. I'll wait just a moment. Madam Clerk, any other virtual hands raised? I see Mr. Haugen, his name is there, but I see no hand raised.
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay, very good. Well, I'll move to the in-person public comment. I don't see any sign in on the sheet, but if anyone here would like to address counsel during public comment, you are more than welcome to do so. Going once, going twice, seeing none, I'll declare the public comment period closed. Now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of February 26, 2024. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of March 4, 2024. C, motion number 2024-18, approving American Lake Park and Mords Lake Park furnishing purchases. D, motion number 2024-19, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Cascade Right Away Services, Inc., in the amount of $171,120 for services related to the Cruster Road project. E, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, American Lake Lake Management District Number One Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of October 10, 2023. Two, American Lake Lake Management District Number One Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of December 14, 2023. Three, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of February 1, 2024. And four, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of February 21, 2024.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which a council member wishes to remove from consideration at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Pearson, second by Councilmember Branstadter, that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda ordinances. Ordinance number 801. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 801, vacating the 20-foot wide alley of budding lots 1 through 14, Block 69, Town Platte of Lakeview.
Thank you. And for this, I'll call on the Public Works Engineering Director, Mr. Paul Bucic, to give us a brief overview before I call for a motion.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of City Council. Two weeks ago, we had an open public meeting to hear comments from individuals who may have thoughts, both in support and opposed to the alley vacation. We heard none. At that time, we mentioned or indicated that we were going to bring forward an ordinance for council consideration to vacate the unused and, in our opinion, unnecessary alleyway. Tonight, rather than dive into all that again, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have lingering after our last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bucic. Any questions, members of council? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 801? Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 801? It's been moved by Councilmember Pearson, second by Councilmember Laura Sella, that we adopt ordinance number 801. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance 801 has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Bucic, appreciate it. Unfinished business or new business, Mr. Caulfield?
There is none this evening, Mayor.
Very good. So now we'll turn to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce first our Parks and Recreation, actually, our Parks Recreation and Community Services Director, Marie Dodsworth, to provide you a kind of an overview of all the many park projects that are currently underway and those that are in the queue as we look out the next two to three years. And then followed by Ms. Dodsworth, we have our Public Works Engineering Director, Paul Bucic, who will do the same, except focusing on transportation projects, as well as some of our utility projects in the area of sewer and stormwater, in addition to an emerging list of projects as it relates to our partnership with Sound Transit. So with that, Ms. Dodsworth.
Great, thank you, city manager, mayor, and deputy mayor, city council members. We're excited to update you on the many, many, many park projects that we have occurring that some are in the processes of just getting started, some are in the middle of planning, and some are soon to be started. I'd like to introduce Stacy Redding. You've met her before. She's our capital projects coordinator, and brought her along in case there are any specific questions that you might have. And she works very closely with all of these projects. So we just did some quick math for you, just the projects that were being listed, and we have just about $24 million worth of projects going on right now. I mean, that is a lot of improvement in our city. You know, we're really fortunate that we've received lots and lots of grants and other kinds of funding to offset the city general fund investment that we're making in these sites. So it really is a win-win for the community, and we're grateful for your ongoing support for all these projects. The report that we put together is just a quick summary of the many projects. And so what I'd like to do is just kind of go through them and give you just a quick highlight on most of them. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you have if, as we go along. So just as we start off, you know, we are finishing up Springbrook Park, and that park's been finished for a little bit, a few finalizations that need to be happened. But, you know, the garden has always been the center of that site, and with the more and more that we've expanded that park and added some other elements to it, the garden really does still is the heart of that park and that community. And so we'll be excited on Park Appreciation Day when we start getting it really filled and planted. They're already working on it. Kids are playing on the pump track, and it's going to be, again, an amazing resource for that community. And then the creek restoration has really been an improvement. There's been, over the years, just a lot of growth and invasive materials and things thrown over the edge. So we've done a big cleanup of that area, and so continue to manage that and improve the health of Clover Creek. The boundary line adjustment that went on and on and on has been completed and signed and finished. And so mainly, the property that's owned by Pierce College, they did not want to have any involvement with the lake, and so we really did cut the lake out of the project. So that's been completed and found that most of the area that was burned is really Pierce College property. And so some of the activities and improvements that need to occur up there, they would be taking the lead, although we certainly partner in lots of areas. And we are working with them and need to get together and really have kind of an operational agreement, because as you know, there's no fences out there. People are coming and going from all spaces. We just want to make sure that we're all working from the same plan, so that we're doing what we need to do. And especially with the historic elements, we've learned a lot over the years and done a lot of work in the, with historic preservation. And we just want to make sure that they understand the importance of that as well.
I don't know if I've seen, maybe I missed a copy, the final boundary line adjustment where the line is drawn on the map. That might be helpful to see.
Sure, we'll get that sent out to you.
Yeah.
No problem, absolutely.
Mr. Branstadter has a question, too.
Yeah, with respect to, we're working on an operational agreement, and I know that with boundary lines changing, so there's something would need to change. But are we actually updating an existing agreement? Or have we been operating on handshakes and things that's going on? I guess, you know, the, one of the priorities is that although it's true that it's not apparent to people when they move from Pierce College property to city property to moving forward, and to be honest, that's a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
It creates a feeling of greater expansion, and the, at the, Pierce College has been, for much of their property, good stewards in terms of some of their areas, a good open space to be able to go and do that. But I wouldn't want to get a, an agreement that is too structured that would limit the mobility of the public to use all of the space that appears to be parked.
Right.
Even though much of that is, as you say, is Pierce College property, just as a long time ago was all state property or county property or something. So, but I think that having an agreement is good, and certainly, we worked out a really good detailed agreement with Pierce College with respect to the ball field. So I think expanding that to the park to be able to go and do that. One of the Pierce College efforts that is more than a decade old, but it happens, and then it doesn't happen, and then it happens again, and doesn't happen, had to do with the planting of trees in areas that were under theirs to be able to go and do that. I'd encourage you to come to some agreements about how we're both going to contribute to that, as the park being one area where a portion of our goal to increase the tree canopy in the city can take place.
I, Councilmember Branstadter, absolutely agree with you. The, when we talk about operational agreement, it shouldn't have any effect on people's ability to use or come and go. We just want to make it really We just want to make it really clear regarding maintenance, operations, risk management primarily, so that everybody's safe that's using the park. And then also, when we do events and activities, or we have folks coming in and doing runs and activities like that, they are crossing boundaries. And so we had different informal agreements. There's been administrative changes there. So we just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. We're all aware of all of the different things that are going on, and just making sure everybody that uses the site is safe, and that whatever they're doing is keeping the site safe. So, so anyway, you wouldn't, I don't think a citizen would probably understand the difference between coming and going. There won't be any changes there. At least that's not anything that we're anticipating, so. But good segue into the Fort Silicon Park Athletic Field Project, the next one on our list. So that is a project that, again, has put well over $7 million worth of investment at Fort Silicon Park. Very, very, very little of that actually was paid for by the City of Lakewood. It was through grants and other processes, although the city is the owner of that structure and all of those improvements. We've been, it should be done by the end of this month, in just a couple of more weeks, really substantially. It's kind of substantially complete now. We're finishing some things. Pierce College will be starting to play on that, probably early April. We'll be doing our ribbon cutting and dedication and celebration on Park Appreciation Day. Most of you are out there helping us out, so we'll just rally you up at the end of the day and and do that celebration at noon. And we're working now with them. We do have the operational agreement that, and the code of conduct and all of those things. And so we're just working out keys and access and coming and going and safety and who's on first. So we'll be making plans. And we also have reservations tentative because we're not taking a real reservation until we knew that the site was done for tournaments and things every weekend, you know, through July. So people are excited about the new field and the new activities, and so we'll be working on that. More to come on that. The Tensler Log, again, that's another project that is moving swiftly to manage the timeframe that the library has put together on moving or demolishing their building. So we've been working on bids to create the foundation to support it, and the library will be moving it, and then how to protect it and keep it safe in that park setting. And so we're getting on that. And just working through, of course, the bidding, the procurement process, the permitting process. I mean, there's a lot of things that go into that. You just don't move 10 tons of wood in an afternoon. There's a lot that goes into logistics to keep that, protect the resource, but also, again, protect all the folks that want to come in and enjoy it. So we're going to do our best to keep that safe in this setting. We just last week had an open house with the Nisqually Tribe at their gym, the Billy Frank Junior Gym. And it was, we've been working with the Parks Commission, Nisqually Parks Commission. They are the keepers of the decision-making process. And so that was great that we have that that infrastructure, or that system set in place so we can keep moving forward to this project. We had a great open house last week to kind of just make sure that the locations and the themes that we've all been working on are what people want to see, and then how do we enhance those? There'll be art probably included with a lot of the different exhibits. They're just not going to be, as we call, a book on a stick. There'll be some interactive and some really cool things out there. And anyway, it was a really good opportunity to talk with folks and some of the artists that came out and see some of the work they've done and how it might be incorporated into this project. So we meet with, again, the commission every month to keep this project moving forward. And considering all of the elements to it, and the timeframe we have, again, it's another one of those things you have to keep on top of to get to the end line. So we're still on task with that. And again, that's due to be completed at the end of June next year, because there's a lot of moving parts once we, to get to what we want to do, then have it fabricated and then installed. So we'll continue to give you briefings along the way once changes have been made. But it's been a really fun project to work on. Wayfinding and the main entry improvements, council approved that. You've already approved the design for that. We've been working on just really, what are the most important features of the park that we want to identify? We all know if we put 27 different signs throughout the park, they'll just lose their effectiveness. So really, how do we get people into the park while they're driving, and where do they go so they know all the different elements that they might want to use now and in the future? And then also, from a pedestrian perspective, how do you make it easy for people to know you are here and where you want to go? And, you know, how long is this loop? And now we have the beautiful Elwood Trail that Public Works put in, and so we want to make sure those things are represented on the new maps and on the signage. So that's happening.
Quick question, quick question for you there. The status sentence under the wayfinding signage talks about the family of signs was selected in '23, and cost estimates will be developed for consideration in '25, '26 budget. But the prior sentence talks about the electronic reader board design was also approved, and we know it was funded with ARPA monies.
Correct.
Is that going to be done this year and not have to wait till '25, '26?
Correct. I'm sorry, that was primarily just the wayfinding. I think there's a section
There is.
a few minutes to talk about the sign. So we're working on the park signs. And council approved the actual, like, the American Lake Park sign and the, you know, the entry signs. And so once we get and they're done at a couple of different scales, you know, a neighborhood park's going to have a little bit smaller one than maybe some of our larger regional entrances. So once we get the cost estimates, we know how much that's going to cost, then we'll, that's the number one priority for the park sign part. The reader boards, we're also getting the cost estimates for the fabrication of those, and we'll be bringing that back to you
Okay.
so that then we can discuss with you, talk about the specific locations, because there were some suggestions on those, and show you what it would look like in this spot, what it would look like in this spot. There may be a couple of spots to show you, and then we'll know at that point, you know, how many can we build? And so we'll be bringing that back to you as soon as we get those cost estimates. And I think they're going to be done, the cost estimates. When would that be completed-ish?
I believe in a couple of weeks.
So yeah, so the park sign cost estimates will be coming first, and then the reader boards will be coming soon thereafter.
Got it. We just, we know that there's
So no, the idea is, is that once we know really what we want to build and where we're going to put it, then we can put the bids out to get it. And which would put it through a bidding process because it would have to be created, fabricated, and installed. So that'll come back to council for confirmation.
Got it.
Yeah, and I think it'll happen this year. I mean, unless you want to put 10 up, and then that might take a little longer, but
There's time constraints on the ARPA funds, so we're mindful of them.
Yeah, no, no, we're very mindful of that. Absolutely. So, absolutely. We're working on all of those deadlines. Absolutely. So also at Fort Silicon Park, we're looking at that overflow parking lot. And so the biggest challenge for us was finding an engineer to actually help us put the specs together so we could get the permitting done so we could build it. We do have someone now that's working with us on that. And again, it's in a historic area, so there's added cultural resource surveys and things that have to be done. So our
Where's that going to be?
It'll be probably across the street in the area of the pavilion, so that it'll connect for the parking for that, and it'll also be closer to our events and activities. The biggest problem we have is we often will use the playground parking lot or the, we call it the soccer parking lot, the one that's on the end. But when we have a farmer's market and a summer fest, we don't really have a place for handicap access. And so, you know, they're in the back 40, and it's just a challenge to get there. So we're doing a little two-for-one out here. It'll be a pad big enough to be able to do other things as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Branstad.
Finalizing the location of that based on access. It has to be ADA access, has to make the amenities that you're trying to get to ADA accessible. So we'll be looking at it along Angling.
Okay.
Yeah, Ms. Carter, yeah, I understand what additional parking would serve, you know, the things like that. But what is going to get displaced? I mean, what's what's now going to be turned into pavement?
Just our overflow parking areas, that's really what they're all used for now. We wouldn't be doing it on a soccer field or a picnic area. It would be in an area that's right now just open space, overflow parking. They just finalize it because you can't have
So are we talking something that is on the west side of Angle Lane, north of the H Barn?
Yes.
But between that and where there is a soccer field?
Correct.
And that going to go all the way back to the trees and the slope that goes up?
No, no, no. We won't be able to build anything that large. And there's, we'll probably, no, we won't be building anything that big.
So how many parking spaces?
I believe we're planning for 100. We'll know once we get the engineering down and the cost estimates, but that's what we're looking for right now.
That's the area that's traditionally just been parked on the the grass, right?
Yeah, it's just, it's just native soils, and it's not ADA accessible because it's rough and hard and soggy in the winter. So it would create an area so that you would have adequate ADA. It won't all be ADA accessible parking, but it sometimes will be turned into that, like when we have a special event. We've turned the whole playground parking lot into ADA parking.
Okay.
So there'll be, it'll be multi-use like everything at the park so that we have the most flexibility with it to serve our citizens. But we've really heard from our citizens during farmer's markets, events, and activities, there just is not enough parking for folks with mobility issues.
Okay. But it is space that is, in its current fixture, is sometimes used like for motocross you know, cycling routes
Cyclacross.
and/or cross-country routes traverse through that site as it is now, which would those would need to be adjusted because they, you know, the people, the motocross people and the and the cross-country people, you know, you are really fond of the park and how it can be adapted to that. And that's, and those are well-attended and well-participated in events.
We take all of the use into consideration before any, you know, final decisions are made. And at 350 acres, we've got a little bit of room to adjust when things need to be adjusted. But most of the time, we can modify our needs for this with those that are doing things already. And we're aware of when people are, all of those different areas that they're using. So they'll be able to continue in the manner in which they have. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll keep going fast through here. I know we've got a lot to cover. So Fort Silicon Park cottages, I know that there's been some draft MOUs. We've been working on what are the, you know, operational impacts, maintenance impacts, and really, I guess, the city's intention would be to have a very, the same MOU that the hospital had with the historical association, although I think the historical association's expectations are a little greater that the city would help them and take more responsibility for the maintenance side of the operations where they would do more of the operational from a, you know, museum and activities and events. So, but we're working through all those details, and I know that city managers kept you updated on that, and more to come on that. On how that might affect, you know, like, again, long-term impacts for city operations. Colonial Plaza, there was an intent to put some, after council chose the official naming of that, so we all can say the same thing and be in the same location, is to do some interpretive signage there. And so that would be something that we can easily do down there by Motor Avenue area to kind of recognize the history of that site. And Lakewood Historical Society has good information on that, and they'd help us with that to make sure that it was kind of conducive to all the other things that are happening there. Again, I already chatted with you about the park sign replacement program, so we should be moving forward with that and getting those installed this year for sure. And then Mordslake 1 and 2, that has been an ongoing project, again, another large investment, over $6 million. It is going to really change. There's just nothing from South Tacoma Way east of our community. There's just no open space. And so it's such an important place. City's been buying a parcel at a time since incorporation, really, and you're at 36 acres now. And that is just going to change the use of that area. I think it's going to bring the community together. It's going to provide great equity to those folks on that side of the community that really don't have good, safe access to open space. Stacy's been working on this project for the last several years, and it's really coming together. And we're going to be really protecting those biomes, those old growth forests, the Oak Prairie, the wetland areas, and still making those accessible activities. And so it's really going to change that area. It's going to really be something you're going to be proud of. And we'll be going to bid to that here in this summer. And it should be done by the middle of next year. So we're going to do it all at once. We're very efficient with our operations, right? So we've kind of held off on one so that we can add two. And if we can get through permitting and bidding, and we'll be able to get that thing constructed. So we're pretty excited. But it is a very, you know, park projects are really complicated. You know, they have all these different moving parts. And if they're near the water, or there's a special plant, or there's, you know, they're just very complicated. And then we add a building and you know, it's, they're very, they're all very unique. And they're not just, you know, even with our permitting people, it's not just building a building, right? There's so many moving parts, and so lots of different people get involved. So but we're all doing our best to make good use of those resources and get that work done. Good segue to American Lake, project on the water, right? We've been working on that project. That's a well-used site, a very, very overused site in the summer. And then, again, we're going to be making that park, just modernizing it like we did for Harry Todd, really make it a great site that can be easier to access, really well-used by the community. Get rid of some of the old infrastructure, make it really open and safe and a wonderful place for people to visit throughout the year. The next two projects, Oak Brook and Primley Park are both little neighborhood parks. We've met with the neighbors. We did focus groups with them and found out the things that they were interested in and what they're excited about, what they're concerned about. So we've had those plans sort of sitting on the table until we're able to get to it, which we will be getting to soon because we have some additional support coming. And you'll see information coming back on the specifics of that project and getting those final designed and put out so that we can get those constructed, those improvements for those neighborhood parks. Especially Primley Park and Oak Brook, they're kind of in areas where there's really nothing else in those areas, and so they're important to those folks. And we want to make sure that we keep those sites safe and easy to access and make them accessible. Some of them need a little support in that area. Chambers Creek Trail, many of you have been down there from Phillips Road across the bridge over there by Kobayashi. And so that's getting ready to go out to bid probably in the next three to four weeks. That's going to be totally managed by the county. And we'll be looking at getting connections from one end of the park, Phillips Road Kobayashi, all the way to the other end, Chambers Creek. And we'll have an access on Zircon Drive across from the golf course. And then the one thing that we are going to do as an ad alternate is the second bridge. You will still be able to get through from one end to the other. But that second bridge is really, we're finding, very complicated. It's going to take a helicopter and to get it in there, and it's a very sensitive area. So we've got the design, but we'll be doing that as an ad alternative so that we can just make sure that we can afford to do it. And we've talked with the funders, and we've talked with the planners, that if for some reason it just seemed out of reach right now from a cost-effectiveness to be able to do it with the funds that we have, it's an easy thing that we could come in and apply for the same grants that we've been using and maybe put it in as a phase three. But we won't know that until we get through the whole bidding process. So we'll come back and give you an update on that, let you know how that turns out. But there's been a lot of change, again, in the Pierce County in their capital projects. So people are getting brought up to speed, but it is moving forward. And again, it's due to go out to bid April 15th and be construction starting the 1st of June. Edgewater Park, we are finishing the master plan. The park board's hosting the last meeting next Tuesday so that they can have a preferred alternative that they will be recommending and bringing your way. You're due to talk, to see that in April. And that process has been moving along, and I think that you'll be happy to see that. We don't have the cost estimate yet. That's the one thing that we're working on. So hopefully, it won't be too surprising. We'll be able to keep moving forward with that. And we do plan to apply for RCO grants. We've been working with the grant agencies, and there's two or three different grants that we can use. You know, we love a good two-for-one and a match here and a match there. So we're trying to utilize all of our resources to make that project be able to move forward and do something really nice down there to support access in that area for the folks who live in and around that area, and anybody in the community that wants to go to Silicon Lake. The Street Ends, that is on the work program of the park board. They did a prioritization as part of the report. There's, based on council feedback, we'll be bringing that back to the park board later this summer, early fall, to do kind of a reprioritization based on feedback from council and then bring a recommendation forward to you as to the sequence. Council had said, let's try one, maybe two, part of the '25, '26 budget process so that we can start implementing that plan and do a good pilot project to get, show people that it can be done and that it can be an asset to the neighborhood. And we'll see how that turns out. Sealy Lake, that's over there. It's kind of on hold. The county's sort of been waiting to decide how they're going to move forward again with the changes that they've had. They did a bunch of improvements, cleared the brush and moved the gate up, so you didn't have some of that nonsense. so you didn't have some of that nonsense happening down there. We just aren't there anymore. So we're really not as day-to-day impacted by that site. So, and they are sort of waiting to get through permitting as well. There was a bunch of changes and questions and so that's, they're just taking the lead on that from this point on. So those are all the ones that are really active and in the middle of, I mean, we're working on those every single day. And then the ones that are just under, are getting ready to start, you know, the Camp Murray Boat Launch. We've been talking about for years and years and years. And city manager's been working with the staff out of leadership out there to talk about. We have a great MOU, I think, that meets all of the needs. And so they're working on that to see, once that get, initially, I think the idea was is that we would throw our hat in the grant cycle, but we're not going to make those deadlines this year. But, so that project, we'll be doing a master plan so that we actually have something to apply for a grant for once we get an approval or get an agreement that everybody's agreeing up to. So that was a project that we were kind of getting ready to move forward with. So we'll be waiting to just see what the next steps are on that. But again, we would be looking at doing a master plan and then looking at the next grant cycle. As we know, it's a very large site and anything on the water does take time and it's complicated. So we'd be working for on that. For the Pavilion, you know, we've just been doing all kinds of programs in there, meditation and wellness and yoga, and people are loving it. Our older adults are loving it and people are really loving those programs. They're really making a difference. I mean, mental health and wellbeing has been a real feature the last few years after COVID. And, and it's really the difference of the notes and things we get from people. It really is amazing. Plus, you know, we use it for meetings and, and other things too. So we're going to start focusing on some of the weekend use there too, doing some more marketing for, you know, the special event kinds of stuff that we talked about originally, but we see that coming forward too.
It would be interesting to know just kind of the numbers on those yoga and other classes that are servicing seniors because it, it's a great facility for that.
Yeah.
It seems like it's well-loved right now.
It is. And we are working with our staff that's doing our old, the older adult programs because they've been doing stuff at the park and they've been doing stuff at City Hall and they've been doing stuff around and maybe, you know, pulling them together and having something a little more focused on a regular basis to kind of get that population built back up again. And so it's a, it's a great facility for that. So, but we can get that information for you on just participation.
Absolutely. Mr. Bokey, any question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, Ms. Dodsworth, I'm going to ask you to go back.
Okay.
On the, the boat launch. In Camp, Camp Murray Boat Launch. When I look, and it is a nice, it's a, it's even got kind of a little beach down there, if you can call it that and everything. And it's, it looks like it from.
Yeah.
Anyway, it is, it is a big property. But when I, when I go up the road, there's an area to the north or west or whatever, on the other side of the road from Camp Murray.
Okay.
That looks like they have boats stored in it. And then there's an empty lot behind that. Is that part of this property? Or is that private property and someone is leasing those things out?
So I'm not looking at the same map that you're looking at. So you're saying you went, is it on, actually inside Camp Murray that you're talking about?
I don't know.
Or just up Wadsworth Street?
Okay, so when you, when you turn, and you're right there by Eagle Point almost, and you turn in to go to the road down, immediately on your right, there is an apartment complex. Then right after that, it looks like a fenced property that's got like boats in it. And then behind that, immediately behind that, going back towards the lake, there's an empty lot. Is that, I'm just wondering what the boundaries of this Camp Murray Boat Launch are?
We, we can provide you an updated site plan, but primarily it's when you go through the gate to go down to the Camp Murray Boat Launch, it's fenced. And so that sounds like private property. We can check that for you. We can maybe do a color-coded map or something. But it really is going down that short straight after the gate, short straight road. And then you go down the hill to go to that area. So I think anything that's near the apartments that's up at the top is probably, and it's fenced like that, it's probably private property.
Okay.
Yeah. And, oh, I'm sorry.
It is private property. Okay.
But we can, we can provide you with just a outline so you can see the area because as you get down to the water, it gets a little crazy.
Thank you.
And it's considered a rural, a rural, rural, rural launch from Fish and Wildlife who manage it now. And so it's actually more developed than most of their launches. You know, when you go out to some of these places that it's just a gravel parking lot and a launch. So it's not really supposed to have a beach. That's why there's all those rocks there. But people, because there's such a lack of access, they are using it. They're law all along the shore. They're pulling their boats up. It's, they're just sort of using it kind of like we used to call it the Wild West because there's just not, you know, there's no parking plan or system down there. And so anyway, the whole point would be making it more of a functional space for folks to be able to use and access so that, but it would still probably be somewhat passive in nature just because of the nature of the launch. So. Gateways, we're moving on the gateways. So there are two left. We have the one that's, was on 84th and Tacoma Mall Boulevard up there by, so we're talking about moving it down so it's actually more welcome to Lakewood. One of the things that we talked about was is that there is right-of-way near that big retaining, it's a retaining pond that's actually Tacoma land when you cross over on the other side of 84th by Pine. So the idea is that that's one of the finale gateways there. We were thinking when we come back and chat with you that we may want to consider putting in a reader board or one of the electronic reader boards because the site, it's not, there's not a lot of other kinds of visual pollution, I'll say. It's really pretty wide open and it is a big entry into the community from that east side of town. And so it is a location that we could do a gateway. So we'll, we'll chat about that when we come back and have, you know, opportunities and costs. And then the last one would be by the BNI, which is, you know, a challenging, challenging area.
Really tough.
And Mr. Bokey, pardon me, Busic, is probably going to talk to you a little bit about the road projects. And they have determined a location that might work for a traditional gateway there. It's just, there's a lot going on down there. So, but that, that's the finale from all of the gateways that we've been talking about for all these years. So, so anyway, that, more to come on that. The pickleball courts are going to get put in. We're going to start that design at Harry Todd. And we have the deferred maintenance grant. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Branstad, a question, sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Dodsworth, I guess, you know, when we, as we have just virtually, you know, a few, a few minor items away from the completion of the North Gate, JBLM North Gateway Project, which is Washington Boulevard. But, but it, but, but it essentially created a a gateway that was now going to be significantly highlighted coming off of North Fort from JBLM there into, to there, there, you know, where that road comes off and it comes through and it's, it comes in and approaches a traffic circle that's there and being able to go and do that. So, so while, and when, years ago, when we were envisioning where we would need gateways and we looked at it, that wasn't on the list. But it's now become a place that is, because of the work that we've done to highlight that route and to, to make it a preferred route of that, is maybe something that after the two projects here, that they may not be the last gateway, but there maybe is a need to look at whether, you know, a gateway of similar design to the other gateways would be appropriate for folks that are going to be entering from that, that direction.
No, good point. Something for consideration. She's making a note.
I'm writing a note. Just to follow up with Harry Todd, we're going to be putting in the city's first public pickleball courts. Think those will get put in maybe before Oak Brook's, but Oak Brook's is soon thereafter. So that's pretty exciting. I don't know if you know, pickleball has been around for a really long time. There's some private courts here in the city, but we don't have any public courts. So we're really excited about that. We think it's really going to be a nice addition for Harry Todd. People will go there. They'll utilize the businesses in that area and really learn a little bit more about that park. And again, anytime you bring positive activities into a park, it really does enhance the community there. So we're excited about that. And then just Harry Todd, we were able to apply for this grant with short and sweet and fast. And there's never maintenance, but there's still a lot of things to do there. It's an old, old site. So we got $100,000, no match, to do whatever we needed to do there. So, and we also were able to swing some seasonal staff into the mix. So we, I think are going to use those resources very wisely and it'll really benefit some of the work that we haven't done there. We kind of did from the waterfront down, so.
Question for you. Pickleball courts, as you know, it's becoming a bigger deal all the time. Seniors love it. Everyone loves it. A question came up to me about the old foundation of the blown-down barn behind the H Barn that has adequate dimensions for perhaps two pickleball courts in depth. The foundation's in, it could be raised up, paved, you know. It seems like it could be a low-cost option to put in two in that location. Is that something we can look at?
Well, we certainly are planning as we get down here to talk about future enhancements to Fort Silicon Park because part of it is, is we need to update the master plan. And although the foundation is there, there's still curbs there from the old stalls.
You raise it up though.
Certainly, that could be an option. It is historic footprint for a historic facility. So we would need to assess that and see if that's the right place for that kind of activity. We do like to take advantage of opportunities when they're there. And is that the right spot for that? I mean, we would just have to take a look at that. So, and is the foundation, would it have to be pulled out? Because is it even enough of a foundation to support that? And we're going to be doing a lot of work there. So we can, we can ask those questions while we're looking at that. But, but that kind of change to that area is really something that should probably have more strategic thought, big picture.
Yeah, I think the person who commented was, this may be an option since it's existing.
Yeah.
And it would have some activity, utility. So worth looking at, but I get it.
Yeah. And we get suggestions all the time for Fort Silicon from all kinds of folks that, you know, want to come and put in 64 horseshoe pit areas. And, you know, we have, we're working with a group that's really interested in creating a cricket area for men and women because Simone Cricket is something that is pretty big, but we just don't have it here. And again, when we're looking at all those different uses, where's the right place to put it? Even though we have an open space here and it might be perfect, is it really the right place for that activity with all the other stuff? So we try and, and we do have in here, as we're looking at the legacy plan and really taking a look at Fort Silicon, it's changed a lot in the last 20 years. So maybe it's time to take a look at, and we've done a lot of stuff there, really to improve what we inherited, to add some resources that we've thought, thought were good investments for that site. So really, what's the next thing? And what are we not, what are we not going to do? Because, you know, we talked about like the amphitheater up on the hill. Is that really a realistic thing? I mean, we, if you're going to put in roadways and facilities and things, the view's great, but is that, it's on the plan. So maybe something like that goes off and something new starts somewhere else. So, but really thinking of it being more strategically across the, the view of that whole site. And again, the mixed uses, right? What are the right things? So, but yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. And we'll learn more when we're putting these other pickleball courts in that we know. We'll work in these other locations to see even what the infrastructure needs are. I'm not that familiar because we haven't built one, but we are taking it over an old tennis court to do that.
Yeah, another existing.
Facility, yeah.
Base and.
Yeah. We're actually taking out the court stuff because they're not structurally supportive of what we do. We're just build on top. Yeah. So it's a spot, but it'll be, it'll need to be taken out. So. So then, just besides that, you know, we have the H Barn project, Partnership Parks, shared with you, kind of there. They just got another 200,000, well, 250, two different grants just came through. So, you know, they are slowly ticking up that, that lever and they're getting to where they're at. We did talk with council at the last meeting, you know, now that we're not going to really be doing the MOU for, or the master plan for Camp Murray yet, you know, this could be a time where if we wanted to move forward, we're doing some specific design to look at what's the true cost. And really, you know, we know that it's too long inches, but really what's it going to look like? So it seemed like council was in support of that. So that could be something that we look forward, we move forward with. Edgewater Park, once we know what we're doing, we're going to apply for grants and hopefully get to move forward with that and look at maybe potential phases, if possible, depending on the funding. And then the downtown master, the downtown park, I know there's been a lot of conversation on some opportunities in the community to do that. We'll be continuing to have those conversations and that's some exciting new opportunities for things that we haven't had before and in a new area. So that's exciting. And again, the $24 million that we're talking about right now does not include the downtown park, nor does it include the H Barn project. It's really all the other stuff we're working on. So if you put those together, we are rocking it in the Parks Department. Okay, last thing, legacy plan. Our legacy plan, which we've used to successfully get millions and millions and millions of dollars worth of grants, is expiring, so to speak, in 2026 as a six-year product that is required for any of our grants. And so starting with probably early next year, working on getting that updated so that we're ready. May of 2026, is that what it says on here? 2026 is when it has to be updated to meet the grant eligibility for that next round. So we'll be coming forward. And that's a great time to talk about what do we want to do in the community? The downtown park is in that plan, but maybe there'll be more specificity. Fort Silicon Park, you know, a lot of the great improvements that have been suggested, that would be the time to put those in. And it's great when you're doing something like a master plan. Last time we did it, we really focused on Woodslake and American Lake in the, you know, we did citywide, but we really hyper-focused on those two sites because they were really important at the time. We got great feedback and then we've been super-successful with our grants. So this would be the time, I think, to come forward and really take a look at what's next for Fort Silicon Park. You know, we've had conversations from council saying, we love these improvements, but we don't want to over-commercialize it. Or where's the right place to do this kind of activity? Do we want to open up that road? You know, this is the time to talk about it. So a lot of community input, you know, people love that site. So we really want to make sure we're listening to them. The Water District property, that came up as something again to take a look at when we're looking at the next, the next spaces for the city and how it fits within all of our other opportunities. And then just Park Playground, you know, as they come up or they start needing to be replaced, we've got a schedule to start replacing them throughout the park. So lots going on. There's a great map you got in your thing. Shows you that we're doing stuff all over, trying to be equitable. Again, we want to make sure that there's an open space and a wonderful space for everybody within a half mile of their house so they can walk, talk, drive, ride their bikes, pull a stroller, wagon, get there, and then have a great, safe place to be healthy. That's it. Sorry it was longer than 10 minutes.
Yeah, that's all right. Mr. Branstad.
Thank you, Ms. Dodsworth. I, you know, you have your work cut out for you. And I'm glad to see that your retirement was not on one of the lists between now and the end of all these projects being completed, able to go and do that. But I'd just like to back up. I had a couple of questions. You had the, the, the Harry Todd Deferred Maintenance Grant that, and we had some things that were deferred there that's being able to do that. But is, are we facing the same deferred maintenance concerns, but, but yet unfunded elsewhere?
Well, citywide, there's deferred maintenance in lots of different spaces. And we try and keep up the best we can. And for instance, our playgrounds typically are lasting, typically last eight to 10 years. And ours, ours probably lasts 15 because we really take good care of our resources. But there's deferred maintenance throughout the community, right? And so I don't have a master list of that here, but the, the criteria for that particular grant, doing it all, you could, some people chose to do little bits all over their community. We knew that if we focused on one site, there's equity and issues. And we met some demographic requirements that made us successful. We were the number one grant. So we were top. So, and we knew that there, we could do it with $100,000. Like I would love to, one of the things is the American Lake Boat Launch. That American Lake Boat Launch could use some deferred maintenance, right? So, but what we, when we were applying for the grant, we considered that particular location. We wouldn't have been able to do what we needed to do for $100,000 probably. And the timing and the permitting would have been really challenged. So we wanted to do a tight project that worked there. But throughout the city, we're always, you know, there's lots of things to do. So yes, there is deferred maintenance in other locations.
At Harry Todd Park, there is the, the rowing club facility, which is probably the largest city building that's actually totally leased to someone else. But it's still a city. But it's still a city-owned building.
No, no, it is not. It's a pri- a private building on city land that they lease for twelve dollars every year.
So we have no responsibility for the maintenance of that building?
Nope. However, it has created what they call a conversion issue because you can't build an indoor building that has indoor recreational activities, private building on public land that was bought, this was a fifty-year-old issue. So we're working with RCO to try and figure that out. We haven't really stepped into that yet, but it's a private building on public land that was funded with RCO funds, which is a challenge. The city inherited that. I think the county signed off on that about three days before we incorporated. So we inherited that, that problem.
Okay, and then the last thing is in your entire presentation, the one somewhat significant park that got no mention, what was the Kiwanis Park? Is that because the playground there is new enough? It's not on the list to be, to be done? That the skate park is in good shape and doesn't need attention? And the, the restroom facilities are adequate?
Kiwanis Playground has recently been replaced. We worked with, you know, Kiwanis provided quite a large donation to the city to do that and help build it. There are needs there, but it's going to be, that'll be the park, that park will get reviewed when we do the update to the legacy plan. All of the things that we needed to do there, we've done. But yeah, I think it's time to take a look at the skate park. The skate park's twenty-four years old, twenty-three years old. So it's still in great shape. I mean, you know, we just paint over the graffiti every so often, but it's twenty-three-year-old skate park. What, what else might it be? We've talked about wanting a picnic shelter there because people can go and have lunch and there's no picnic shelter there. So it'll get its turn, like all of the parks, it kind of revolves. And so it will get its turn for maybe some real more focused conversation in the next two years.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? So why, why I have you here and Mr. Bucic behind you, dare I ask about Wogop Lake? Because I'm getting no comments, we're all getting deluged with emails from a certain concerned citizen. The, the color of the lake seems to be greener than normal. Is there some sort of seasonal activity going on?
From the leprechauns.
Was the leprechauns?
Mr. Bucic will have to share that information.
I only bring it up here because it was a park-related thing, but it's just a fortuity that Mr. Bucic is here.
Good evening again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about Wogop Lake yet another time. Yes, well, we're well aware of what's going on on the lake. We've taken the appropriate samples and we're waiting the final lab results. We'll be meeting with our consultants to have a conversation about what their findings are in about a week, week and a half when we get the next body of results. So far, we're not seeing anything that is alarming. Things are a little bit different than what we'd be expected. What we're also finding is that some of the parameters that are being thrown out there by others has, it's totally out of skew. The data doesn't prove that, the data doesn't show that. So once we know more of the next round of data coming back from the lab, I'll be better prepared to answer some questions for you on that.
Yep, very good, thank you. Okay, so next you're up, Mr. Bucic. I believe, yes.
Certainly. So tonight, I want to talk to you about the exciting world of transportation. So the first thing I'm going to do is ask if the city clerk can post or put up that sheet. All the dollar values. Thank you. In your packet tonight, you have this sheet minus the total project costs. As we were looking at this late last week, we thought, I bet you the city council would appreciate knowing how much each project is worth. Most importantly, I want to share with you how much money we're going to be spending on the behalf of the community in the next couple of years. And if you take a look at this, you'll see that under the annual capital programs annually on the capital side, it's about eight hundred thousand dollars a year. So we've only actually counted that once in the grand sum total at the bottom. If you really wanted true accurate over the next couple of years, three years, add another one point six million dollars to the bottom. On the capital side, dedicated projects, we have another almost forty-five million. On the sanitary side, we have almost five million of work. Surface water, she's shy of a million. And then with partnership with the Sound Transit, we're expecting to have another fifteen million dollars fully funded by Sound Transit. On the Sound Transit side, the Sound Transit System Expansion Committee passed a do recommend motion to the full board on a resolution that would agree to fund these projects. The tier one and the tier two projects should funding be available. On this list, I've only listed the tier one because until we actually build these and see how much of that money is available remaining, I can't say for certain that they're funded. I will share with you that based on their cost estimates for these seven projects, we say it's about fifteen million based on our estimates. They say it's from like twenty-seven million, so that's what they're planning for. So that's why I can say here with a fairly high degree of confidence that we should be able to build the other four projects on the tier two that we have agreed to with them. Okay? So let's go back up and talk about the annual capital programs. We spend about a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars a year on street lighting. However, we have been waiting for some permits from Tacoma Power Utilities on our twenty-two, twenty twenty-two street lighting contract, which we executed. And we've been waiting for TPU to do their make-ready work and to clear it. They're getting really close, so we should be seeing actually work on some of those poles here in the next couple of months. Pavement patching and minor capital all fall under the same funding that's our three oh two zero 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 four. We broke it out in two parts tonight to show you that we typically set aside a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that pot of money under minor capital for our pavement patching. And then the rest goes to more of the striping markings, minor repairs, if we need to have a ped button replace, other things like that. So that's how we break that out. And then the chip seal is typically about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. Moving into the capital projects, the first one on your list is the Western State Hospital. This is a temporary signal that we worked with DSHS to develop an agreement that went through council that basically says, we will do the design and the implementation of the signal temporary and they will fund it a hundred percent. So it shows two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that's basically two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of somebody else's money. And that temporary signal is up and running. In about four years' time, when they're done with their first body of work, first phase of work, when they move into the second phase, the intention is that the signal on Circle Drive will be moved and put in permanently on Chapel Gate Drive. And then Circle will become a right-in, right-out. And then they will be, they're looking at a possibility, another signal further down closer to eighty-seventh, but they haven't fully decided on that yet. We're also working with them on their street frontage improvements, so they understand that they're doing curb gutter sidewalk for the, the entire length of phase one. And then we'll anticipate that they're going to be doing phase two in a four or five years when they get to that body of work. I tried to get them to do it all at once, but they were very clear that their funding only allows them to do the phase one work. Because I'd rather not have a gap between where we stop our project on Silicon Boulevard at eighty-seventh and Circle Drive. I'd rather not spend our money on it, they're going to do it.
Their phase one site improvements are going to go from where to where roughly?
It's going to go from Far West all the way to Circle Drive.
Okay, and that's where the light is right now?
The existing light, the permanent light is at Circle Drive. The temporary signal is at Chapel Gate. So between eighty, between Circle Drive and Far West.
Okay.
I wouldn't be surprised if not many people know where Chapel Gate is because it's been closed for a long time. But if you drive through there now, you'll see it's now open. They're using it for construction entrance for all their equipment, materials, et cetera.
Got it.
The next three projects on there are active construction projects now. Hardmore Whitman Ninety-third, that is funded with the Transportation Benefit District bonds. Council authorized us to sell a couple of years ago. That project is moving along very well. They have got the curb gutter sidewalks in, might be a couple of sidewalk spots where they need to finish it, I believe. But I think that may actually be done. And starting today, they've started drilling the shafts for the signal bridge. Rather than having four poles on each corner because of space constraints, we opted to go with a signal bridge. We've got three of those in the city, so it's no, no big surprise. But the size of the foundation that was designed is very large. So it's going to take a little bit to get that all done. They're moving along very nicely, though. Our new signal at eighty-fourth and Pine, the curb gutter sidewalk is done for the most part. Last time I was out there, they had a little bit of work they had to tear out and redo on the southwest corner of the intersection. I haven't been out there recently to make sure that's been done. A lot of our work on signals is now having to wait for the manufacturer and deliver of the poles, the signal poles. And in some cases, the streetlight poles themselves. I skipped right over Hipkins, one of our favorite projects, a little over a mile long. Again, another project funded by the Transportation Benefit District. In fact, all three of these, no, they, these two are. Yeah, sorry, I need to use my glasses. And this one's coming along slowly, but it is coming along. The contractor had to put in the water main first because remember, we're partnered with Liquid Water District. They put the water line in, they put the hydrants in, they put the, the side taps in. They tested the first six hundred and seventy feet to make sure there are no leaks. It leaked, so that put them on hold, they had to go figure out where the leaks were. Turns out it was a faulty construction of one of the hydrants, so they're fixing that now. They've now tested the, the next six hundred and seventy feet. It's leaking even worse, so they're going to go back in and fix that. But within a week or two, they're going to be out there doing a, the complete grind of the remaining roadway and getting it adjusted. They're starting to do some irrigation work right now. The, the logger has been out there and removed the trees that needed to come out. So we're moving right along on that. We're still looking at, once they really start working on, on the roadway.
Mr. Bokey has a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bucic. On that, the Hipkins project, some conversations I've had with people. The roads design, I get it. We're taking out the chicanes, they were done to slow traffic a bit at either end or in the middle. And now we're just got one roundabout on a mile-plus stretch of flat, straight roadway. Is that going to be enough to calm traffic? Or are we just, are we just going to end up with a lot more speeding along both those two stretches of road? And have you thought about things like raised sidewalks? I got that question too, about raised sidewalks or something like that. Along Hipkins Road, because right now there are none. Excuse me, crosswalks, thank you.
Yeah, we, I, I understand.
Like we have on Onyx.
We spent a lot of time thinking about exactly this issue, the speed issues. The roundabout is located approximately halfway through the corridor. The speed limit is thirty miles an hour, thirty miles an hour. You can't put in raised crosswalks and you can't put in speed humps. We would have to drop the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour. What we find is you drop the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour, people are going to do thirty anyhow. We are putting in radar feedback signs. And then we're going to have to monitor it over time to make sure that people aren't using it as a raceway. The concern we got the most out on veterans was people were speeding from Gravity Lake Drive to the first roundabout at Lake City Boulevard. We had radar feedback signs in there. And what it basically took was some encouragement from our men in white and in blue that perhaps speeding in that area may not be the best, most advisable tactic. I expect we'll be finding similar efforts necessary once we're done with the project.
Okay, so the thirty mile an hour, so it's a technical issue, the thirty mile an hour doesn't allow you to do the race side. So we'll just live, for now, we'll live with the one roundabout.
That is correct.
And, and speed signs.
Radar feedback signs.
Radar feedback signs, yeah.
When you're talking about a minor arterial thirty miles an hour and up, the opportunity to put in be limiting improvements is fairly limited.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the only question, if I could follow up on that, that I would have in the corridor is you're going to have these really nice sidewalks on both sides of Hipkins. And we've got the nice sidewalk going down angle to the park. It's going to be challenging for people not wanting to go ahead and cross there to get over to Angle Lane from the east side of Hipkins. We don't have any sort of flashing crosswalk, nothing there, right?
We will, as part, if I'm remembering correctly, we put a flashing sidewalk sign on angle where it comes around the corner on the west side, so they can get to the sidewalk. I'll have to confirm, but I thought we were designing a rapid flashing beacon right there to get them from the east side of Hipkins to the west side of Hipkins and approximately of.
By Angle Lane there.
Yeah, it's been a little while since I looked at the design, so I apologize, I don't know exactly.
Yeah, that, that was the concern I could see though. But if people are still zipping down at thirty, hopefully they'll see the flashing, whatever.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Yeah, let us know on that, that'd be great.
Sure, will do. So moving on, we've talked about eighty-fourth and Pine. We do have a project for changing out all of our traffic signal controllers. They've all been purchased, they're out at Pierce County Shop. Pierce County is prepared to do all the programming for us. We're going to start shipping them all the programming sheets. They'll program them, they'll test them, then they'll, they'll install them for us under the existing contract we have with them. A big project that we're still working on the design, excuse me, we should be done here in the next month or two, is South Tacoma Way from eighty-eighth, City Limits. That project, I see that Mary Dodsworth has left, but she referenced a gateway sign there. And we spent a lot of time trying to figure out how we could get a gateway sign in there by the BNI because there's so many existing improvements already in the way. But we think we figured out how to make it fit. It'll be on the west side of the road facing incoming traffic, obviously. We're going to have to jog the sidewalk around it. But it'll be about the same scale as what you'll see on Bridgeport when you're going across the freeway, going into JBLM Main Gate. So it's off on the side, so it's a very similar approach to that. We have South Tacoma Way overlay. That is, we'll be hitting the streets here pretty quick from ninety-sixth to Silicon. We have just got authorization today from the State Department of Transportation for doing this, the Safe Raucous Schools Far West Sidewalks. We had a bit of a challenge on that. They have now implemented a policy that no matter whether any encroachments in the right-of-way are conflicting with your project or not, if you have a project you're spending their money on, you have to clear the encroachments. So basically, we worked with them to establish that we could use an existing process and form that we use here at the city that allows the property owner to have their encroachment in there. But it stipulates that if they ever need to replace it or repair it, they have to put it back on their property line. Or if they sell their property, it has to be removed and put back on their property line. We've had people who, one guy calls me and says, I've lived here thirty-five years, my fence has never been a problem. I think it's on my property. I said, and well, we've already surveyed it and it's not. And this is a way for you to be able to continue there until you need to replace it or sell it. Otherwise, if you opt not to do this, then we're going to have to have it removed. Two days later, he came in, got it notarized and everything's good. But this is something that we will be doing on all of our projects. So it's a bit of a heads up for everybody that if you hear complaints from constituents because the city's asking them to move something, we're really not. We're asking them to execute this agreement that will be recorded against a property, allows them to keep it there. Unless it's in the way of our project. If it's really extreme, and I've had some cases where someone has fenced thirty feet of city right-of-way, that's a no-go. That's a, you, you're, you're taking up way too much. If you're six inches, twelve inches, two feet on a little bit of a corner here, then we have a process that can allow that. But if you're basically taking up a lot of the city right-of-way for your own personal use like that, then we're going to have a different conversation with that property owner and what needs to be done. And as always, if it's in the way for our project, we notify them, we're taking it out. If it's in really good shape, we're good neighbors, we'll build it back on their property line. If it's in bad shape, it comes out. And thank you very much for understanding and you're welcome for allowing us to, let you use it for the decades that you did, but no more. So moving right along, eighty-seventh to Weller, this is our big project here. This is completing the work on Silicon Boulevard that we brought it up to Weller last year. I think we finished off most of it and now we're going to go from Weller all the way to eighty-seventh. It's a, it's a large project, a little over six million dollars. We are within two months of advertising this project for construction. It's going to have a big impact, so we're going to have to do an awful lot of public outreach. Contract will be doing it in sections. Unlike in some of our other projects, we don't intend on allowing the contractor to shut down. Unlike in some of our other projects, we don't intend on allowing the contractor to shut down the road while he's doing the work, because there is no suitable bypass. We could do that on Washington Boulevard, cause we, we had constructed veterans. We don't have an alternative. So the contractor's gonna be working and balancing with traffic. Makes the project a little more expensive for everybody. But we gotta get people across the city and, and back and forth to, um, homeschool, jobs, et cetera. The next one is, um, it shows as, as. This one's a little struggle, because this is the one project that's not fully funded. In fact, it's not funded at all. Uh, we applied for the Raze Grant, uh, like we did previously, but this time we threw a few more things in there and revised cost estimate. One point one million dollars. It's to take a look at the downtown center, look at the transportation network we have. To identify any improvements that can be done, uh, ways to make it more, uh, user friendly for those who walk. Bike and roll. And, uh, to identify things that, uh, we will want to do to make it more ADA friendly. And we use a consultant this time to help us with that, and he has some really good ideas. He feels really good about our chances. I feel pretty good about our chances. We won't know until June whether we get the grant. But if we do that, then we'll be working on that for the next year, um, to come up with these, these concepts. We're also using this to update our traffic demand model too, citywide. Because we need it citywide in order to determine what the local impacts are in the downtown core from the future development. So a hundred street from South Tacoma Way to Lakeview Drive, we have a PSRC grant. That, um, accounts for design and right of way, not construction. So we are gonna be pursuing a PSRC grant. We've already submitted the preliminary paperwork. For consideration in this next, uh, round. That's why the amount here is pretty small. Compared to the total project costs of about five million dollars. The next two projects, a hundred and twelve street southwest, Idlewild Road to Interlocken and Idlewild Road from the schools, a hundred and twelve. Those are two separate projects, but because of the size of the projects, we have one consultant doing the design of the two of them. We're gonna put it out as one project, but get better bids this way. We're building sidewalks on the west side of Idlewild from the school down to a hundred and twelve. And then we're gonna be building curb gutter sidewalk and, uh, roadway from a, on a hundred and twelve from Idlewild to Interlocken. This is part of our master plan for connectivity to get people from the north end, why we're doing Hipkins. Ties into the existing sidewalk and creating new sidewalk to get to Interlocken. And then a couple down here is the Interlocken project from a hundred and twelve to Washington Boulevard. And we have a consultant, um, scope, schedule and budget for that work next. That'll be coming before council here in the next few weeks. Military Road, this is design only. Again, this is one that we have submitted for PSRC grants. Uh, for construction. It's a straightforward project. If PSRC doesn't fund this one, our intention is to go after TIB. And for the actual, uh, construction, while it's a PSRC design, TIB. Should view this very positively. We had applied for it before this one and as well as Custer. They decided to fund the Custer project. Both projects are very good. Um, they basically told us, we love both projects, but you're not gonna get seven million dollars out of this round, so you're gonna get this one instead. We said, thank you very much, we'll apply the next round. So that's where we are on that one. Speaking of which, Custer Road is the next one. That one is a TIB funded project. Um, it's under design right now. We have a, uh, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars allocated in the budget for replacing the school zone lights in the system. If you are walk, driving around the city, you'll notice that some of the flashing lights are starting to disappear and signs are going up. And because our whole system has basically reached the end of its service life. And we can't get replacement parts. And we have some errant drivers that hit the poles and take them out, and we have no choices. So we're putting the signage up. But we're trying to pull together a request for proposals to get some of the companies that manufacture these systems. To give us some, uh, current updated bids, so that we can start implementing it this year. I talked about the Interlocken project. Nyanza Road, Nyanza, complete that loop around Gravity Lake Drive. That's an exciting project for us. We are asked for a consultant statement of qualifications. They're due tomorrow at four o'clock. And at that point, we will start, after we interview and select, we'll of course do the scope, schedule, budget, bring before the council. Get your authorization and then start, uh, moving on that project. As a part of the evaluation, we are gonna be looking at the potential and the feasibility of building a roundabout. At the north end of Nyanza. The challenge with that is what do you do with traffic while you're building the roundabout? So we've got some ideas on that, that might allow us to actually get that roundabout in over a weekend. Which is far different from the other roundabouts. Here's the kicker to that. We cannot do the, um, concrete. Like we've done on the other ones. The reason why we went with the concrete on the other ones, cause it's got a fifty-year life. With a roundabout, if you go asphalt, you're looking ten to twelve year life. Um, because it wears out faster. So this is something we have to evaluate. We have to also look and see if we've got enough room to not ask by land from one property owner. So it's gonna be a squeeze, but we'll, you'll be involved in that conversation as we move forward under the design work.
Might be a good one there, though. I mean, if we can make it work, be a great location for Roundabout. It's gonna be a weird intersection as it is, yeah.
Um, under the Raze Grant, one of the things we stipulated is that we would, would be looking at improvements. On the major corridors around the downtown. That would include looking at replacing signals with roundabouts as appropriate. Um, there's a number of locations that roundabouts would work very well.
Yeah.
Um, they help us in a lot of different ways. I won't bore you with that again, but. This being a roundabout would tie into the others, if we can make them all work and, and traffic flow nicely.
Mr. Pearson. I was gonna save my question for later, but while we're talking about roundabouts, um, it. What is just order of magnitude, i- I assume there's a maintenance and, uh, operations cost savings on. Having roundabouts rather than signalized intersections. Is there, or I guess, is there any savings there?
There is. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Pearson. There's initial upfront costs that is typically more expensive for a roundabout. Give you an order of magnitude. If a traffic signal, um, were to cost between five fifty and seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to install. I would expect the roundabout to cost us between a million and a million and a half, depending upon the size and magnitude of the roundabout. Um, however, roundabouts don't require maintenance other than landscaping. And if you drive around some of them, you see we're trying to minimize amount of landscaping necessary at all. Um, there's no electricity cost. There's no controllers that have to be replaced on a regular basis. There's no system, system, electronic systems that control the controllers. We haven't actually done a side-by-side comparison on the actual cost differential. Because what really drives us to, to look at roundabouts is traffic flow. When cars are not stopped, they're not em- emitting greenhouse gases. So it helps us an awful lot on the greenhouse gas emissions and what we're trying to do across the community. One of the number one big things, though, is safety. Um, as the rest of the council members have heard me speak in the past about safety on roundabouts is. If you're gonna have an accident, it's probably gonna become a slow speed accident. Someone slows down, cause they, they think they need to stop and someone bumps them in the back end. Um, if there is an accident in the roundabout, someone coming in and someone already in the roundabout, it's a glancing blow at twenty miles an hour. Um, deaths, serious injuries, they go down tremendously. They're safer for pedestrians and cyclists, because each one of the approaches and exits has a, um. Island, pedestrian island in the middle. So if they do get into there and they see someone coming too fast, they can stop and be protected. From someone hitting them, as opposed to just trying to run across thirty, forty, fifty feet of, of roadway to get to the other side. So there's a significant value in the roundabouts, and we're finding that. Um, initially, people were, oh, roundabouts, they're, they're so dangerous, you're gonna kill so many people, you can't do that. After they've been in for a while, I don't know about you, but I don't hear com- complaints from people on the roundabouts. Um, if they, everyone's just kinda silent on them. They just use them, because they just work. Snow and ice, they work. Power outages, they work. Rainstorms, they work. I mean.
Yeah.
They're good.
And then, um, so a number of our roundabouts have had, um. I presumably semi truck traffic of some size, I don't know what, but. It seems like there are, people are always running up and over the, the, the middle of the island and. Damaging the, you know, two foot tall curb and landscaping and signage and stuff that's in there. What, how do we, you know, keep trucks that are not designed to be using that out of the areas? Or, you know, is there signage issues or communications issues? Like, how, how are people getting in these situations where they're destroying, you know, what's in the, the middle of the, the roundabouts and? Um, yeah, anyway.
So the roundabout in particular, that we have had challenges with semis, they shouldn't be in there. And that's they're coming through North Fork.
Yeah.
Rather than, this is during the course of construction, rather than take the, the dedicated truck route that brings them through Silicon. Up Silicon Boulevard through town, a couple of the errant drivers had said, oh, I'm gonna take a right here and go through, cause I'm not familiar with it. And they hit the roundabout there at Edgewood and Washington Boulevard.
Yeah.
And, and because of space limitations, we didn't design it to handle the full-size loaded semi to come in and turn to go into Silicon. If they're coming down Washington Boulevard, it can handle it, just can't make that turn. But to my knowledge, we've had three or four of them get high-centered in there, and I guarantee you that the drivers who do that only did it once. And they didn't come back through there again. For the rest of the roundabouts, uh, we're not done with the markings, pavement markings. So there will be markings, yellow paint around the inside, very similar to the one out here in front of City Hall. Um, the other instances we've had during the course of construction, even post-construction. If y'all remember, the, uh, woman with the child in the car that drove through the roundabouts at, um, North Gate. And through the wet concrete, and the truck fire, fire guys helped lift her and move her out. And then we've had one guy who hit the, that I'm aware of, um, on Gravity Lake Drive between Washington and Veterans. The reports from the folks who saw it were there. He got impatient with people going too slow down Gravity Lake Drive southbound. So he got in the center lane and drove past everybody at a high rate of speed. And then when he got to the intersection, he realized, oh, no. So he slammed on his brakes, he sent the. Hit the pedestrian safety, um, island, I call that, and he hit the two-foot barrier and ended up. In the gravel. And because we have a loose gravel in there, even with four-wheel drive, he could not get his truck out. We've had a couple of other incidences where people have hit the roundabouts. How do we stop that? We never will. We have the same situation when people driving through intersections and hitting our. Our pedestrian poles, hitting our signal poles, um.
Hidden nerve.
Yeah, I, I can't, I can't, I don't have an answer for you, other than sooner or later. The vast majority of the people know how to drive roundabouts. They don't drive drunk through the roundabouts. They don't drive distracted through the roundabouts. And if they do, then our men and women in blue are there to help them change their ways after the fact.
And hopefully their insurance will help us too.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I have, I wonder, are there any opportunities to combine the gateway and a roundabout? So I don't know if there's places that we could do that, just so it actually has quite a presence. And really is something that could be done. I just wondering if those two could be combined at any point with. Cause we are talking about gateways, we're talking about roundabouts.
Uh, Councilmember Bell, thank you for the question. I will tell you, if you go out and you drive the roundabout at Edgewood and North Gate Road. Our gateway sign is in the middle of the roundabout. If you go to Nyanza and Gravity Lake Drive, our gateway sign is in the middle of the roundabout. Um, if you go out to Bridgeport and Pack Highway, it is not in the middle of the roundabout. It's in a center groin area, landscaped area. And if you're coming off of five twelve, heading up South Tacoma Way. The gateway sign was placed, um, in the middle, so that people turning left down a hundredth, uh, would see it there.
Right. I was just wondering if there's anything beyond the actual gateway, gateway sign, if we had any opportunities. To do something larger at some point in the future, when we're thinking about the roundabouts. I think about other cities that I've seen and how they just have a really, but it's in, the, the space is available there. It's a large roundabout, things like that. So, you know, it has big signage, all the lighting, all the trees, all those kinds of things. So something like that would, it just really speaks to a really nice gateway area, not just a roundabout with our small Lakewood sign in there.
Uh, we are absolutely open to putting anything the council or the, um, Parks Commission or Parks wants to put into them. We make sure that we have power and water in the roundabouts. We have a roundabout on Veterans all the way down by the Lake City Business District that is still sitting in Beauty Bark.
It's colored.
Because the intention was to, in the future, put artwork in there, and that hasn't been done yet. But it's available, so should someone decide that they wanna put artwork in there, we've prepped it for them to go do that. Um, I figure another year or two, if there's no artwork in there, I'm gonna go in there at night and slip some big bowlers to some trees in there when no one's watching. So that it actually looks nicer.
Yeah.
Cause it just looks like a bunch of, of beauty bark. Uh, the rest of the roundabouts, we try to make sure we put, um, plantings in there and zero escaping. Uh, council in the past has been pretty clear that we really don't have the resources for lush landscaping to keep it up. Now, if there's a change in that, we wanna do more, we can certainly do that. So we try to use more native plants, um, signature trees where we can on the roundabout at Forest Silicon Park. Right in the middle, it's gonna take a while, but, um, there's a large tree that's gonna grow in the middle of that, that'll give you a more attractive look on that.
Okay, Mr. LaRocelle has a question.
Just briefly, and I'll have you go back just a little bit. Uh, you were talking about sidewalk improvements near Idlewild Elementary and essentially connecting from Silicon Boulevard. Down Hipkins all the way until you kinda wind down to Washington Boulevard, right? That's kind of the overall.
That's correct.
Uh, which project, or is there a project that gets from Hipkins? To Idlewild Road and then down to the elementary school from the north end?
Um, there is already pre-existing sidewalk from Hipkins.
Okay.
On Hundred and Fourth Street, and then it hits Idlewild and goes up, down Idlewild, if you're going south, all the way to the school. So what we're doing is we're picking it up from the school and continuing it to a hundred and twelfth, and then a hundred and twelfth and Interlocken. That will tie into the new roundabout at Interlocken.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Mr. Bran Center, do you have a question?
Mr. Bucic, on your chart here, you've, uh, noted for the Ardmore-Wittenman ninety-third. For the Hipkins Road, Silicon Boulevard to Hundred and Fourth. That those are, uh, Transportation Benefit District Bond funded.
That's correct.
That, um. But are there not some other projects for the down the list, even though they don't have that notation, that are? Uh, we're, we're, we're in that bond program?
Yes, thank you for that catch. That was very, that was very astute. Um, the Idlewild Project and a hundred and twelfth street project I just spoke of, those are both TBD Bond funded. So there's five. And then the last one on this list that I've spoken to right now is the Interlocken from a hundred and twelfth to Washington Boulevard. Those three plus the other two are all transportation bond funded.
Same. And what about the Mount Tacoma Drive?
I haven't gotten to that.
And Nyanza Road.
I haven't gotten to that one yet, but yes.
Okay.
Yes, both of those.
But it, but it has nothing to do with the, the shading on the, on, 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 on the, on the chart. It's just.
No.
You just shaded every third line, I see, okay.
To be honest with you, I, I looked at that a little bit ago, as I was saying, why are those shaded? And I'm not the only one touching this, so I, I can't tell you why those particular lines got shaded. I like to tell you with a purpose and intent, but it's not. So please just ignore the shading. It's, it's not really relevant. Other than maybe it breaks it up, so it's easier for you to view, right?
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with that one for right now. Uh, I have a few more projects I'd like to get through with you.
Yeah.
Real quick here. Um, we're starting on the design for sidewalks from Far West to Holden on a hundred and twelfth street. We have a grant for that. That'll be sidewalks on both sides. And then Custer Road from Bridgeport to Silicon. We have a, um. Funds for doing the design of about six hundred feet of sidewalk on the north side of Custer. From John Dower Intersection to tie in with that, which is close to, uh, Bridgeport. And then modifications to the signal there, so that. And then modifications to the signal there, so that finally we'll have left turn pockets. Because that's been a concern for people for a long time, at least longer than I've been here. Um, and there was never any funding to do those improvements. The signal's set up for it. We just need to acquire some land and we need to do some improvements in there. So we can now have these left turn pockets that are necessary. And then we have, uh, Mount Tacoma Drive Sidewalk and Improvements. I know that's a favored project for at least one council member. But it will get done and it's the last of our Transportation Benefit District projects. That one's gonna be an interesting one. Uh, there's old concrete panels in there that need to be ripped out. And so, uh, we've also been asked to evaluate the possibility of yet installing another roundabout on the project. And we will, I think that's at Meadow is the cross street. We're gonna take a look at that. It's not a large, um, or a high accident intersection reportable. But it's enough to pay attention to.
Yeah.
Um, again, this is one of those situations where I hate to say it, but people do stupid things and they blow through the intersection because they don't realize that's what that big red stop means. So we'll be working on that. If we can get a roundabout to fit in there, um, that will help tremendously on that, on that location. And then we have grant funding from, uh, Transportation Improvement Board for Ninety-second and South Tacoma Way, a signal design. This is a fast burn, so the monies have to be spent by the end of the year. So we're working on this project rapidly. And then, uh, we have in the future, uh, funds for doing the overlay on a Hundred and Twelfth Street. This is on the north end of McCord Field from South Tacoma Way to Steel Street, the whole thing in there. We've been doing some patching on that, keep it up until the funds come available.
So before you leave capital projects, I just want to ask a question going back up to the Silicon Boulevard, Eighty-seventh Dweller. It seems to me with the, uh, significant Western State work going on in there that this could be a lot of fun to coordinate with all their trucks coming in and our trucks coming in and.
Yeah. Yeah. They have the option, uh, to go down Far West and then Washington Boulevard or to go out through Silicon itself. It's gonna be interesting over the next couple of months on Hipkins Project, because we're gonna need to move out over eleven thousand yards of material. That's over six hundred truck and trailer movements coming through there. We're trying to talk to the contractor right now, trying to determine which is the route that they're gonna take to move that material. Typically, volumes of material that large are heading to East Pierce County towards five twelve, not going to the town of Silicon. So that's gonna be something we're gonna have to pay attention to and manage that carefully with the contractor in order to move all that material out of here. The work on Silicon Boulevard is going to impact to a small degree what they're doing on Western State Hospital. One of our challenges been trying to get the contractor doing the work on Western State Hospital to give us a reliable schedule of work. Um, they've got a lot of fundamental challenges that they're working through, issues that, uh, would have hoped that they would have addressed three years ago before they did, put out the contract. But they're now realizing they have to take care of these things. They're not our issues, but they're issues that impact their schedule of work. And so they're gonna have to work with us and our project if we move forward.
Thank you.
Any further questions on the transportation side or the main body of capital projects?
Anything else? Oh, Mr. Branson does?
Yeah, the, the one item that I didn't see on the list, uh, but we recently had to re-sign, uh, weight limits on the Interlock and Bridge based on the results of an inspection. But is that sort of just those weight limit restriction changes are just, are they somewhat permanent and there's not really a, a, a capital piece of work that needs to be done on that bridge?
Well, the reason why that is not on here is because we're still doing the investigation phase. We've recently executed a contract with a specialty firm to go out there and do their own independent assessment of the bridge, all the different components of it. Um, and then come up with alternatives for priority one, priority two, priority three, bodies of work for the bridge. Some of the work on the bridge can last or be done in four, five, six, ten years. Um, some of it is, you really want to do that in the next eighteen months. But we don't know which is which. And they're also gonna come up with cost estimates for different repair options for that. Once we have that later this year, uh, that should be a part of our next, um, budget request for capital. But we're also gonna be looking to see if there's any outside funding. We've, I've talked to a couple of other jurisdictions who have similar or bridge problems and discovered that there isn't a giant pot of funds out there for people to go and do, uh, repair work on bridges. I just ask you to think about the city Tacoma and, uh, all the bridge problems they've had where they've had to shut down bridges for decades until they were able to come up with the twenty or thirty million dollars. I'm not saying our bridge is gonna cost that much, but I'm just being careful to say that there's a lot of work we have to do before we know how much it's gonna cost and then just to go find some funding to make it work. So for right now, the load limits on their bridge, they're gonna stay until we get some more information.
Thank you.
So on the sanitary sewer side, this is pretty easy. We got three projects. Uh, we got funding from Pierce County through ARPA funding to cover fifty percent of the projects. Yay. We like the other people's money, that's great. The first project is pretty much finished with design. We're just waiting for final comments from Pierce County Sewers so that we can actually put the project out and advertise it. The second project, which is Wadsworth, um, is under design right now and anticipated that we'll be constructing it later this year. And then the last project will be doing design in twenty-four, twenty-five, construction twenty-six. On the water quality side or the stormwater side, I should say, we are behind on two of them, the water quality improvements and the annual drainage pipe repair. We've been shy, a couple of engineers. We're gradually building up our team again. And so we'll be addressing those before too long. I will say the, uh, drainage pipe repair, we've done a much better job taking a look at the results of all the video inspection and then categorizing that, category five through one, and then identifying the worst ones that need to be addressed now versus ones that we would come back, we would do in a couple of years. So that's gonna help us a lot. On the Clover Creek Flood Plane, the levy, um, I'm in the process of discussing this with a selected consultant for scope, schedule and budget. And we'll be seeking outside funding from the Flood Control Zone District. We have two hundred and sixty-four thousand, I think it is right now, available to tap and another hundred and fourteen thousand unless they've changed the numbers. And I just got something from them this morning I haven't looked at. Combined with the funds that we already have budgeted for doing a stream assessment, we have the neighborhood a little over five hundred thousand dollars available. We'll be negotiating hard to make sure we don't spend all that in the next go around. But what we need to do now is we need to make sure that we have a solid location. Because if you remember previously, I said, don't quote me on the exact location where that levy is shown. We have additional work we have to do. And we have a lot of public outreach to talk to the property owners downstream to get their permission to come on their property, do some limited survey work to make sure that if we do something upstream, we're not pushing water into them downstream. So that, that's an ongoing. And if, uh, you'll recall, when I last brought this before you, I said optimistically, we'll be building in five years. Realistically, this could be a ten-year effort. So this will be an ongoing conversation as we move forward with council having the opportunity to say, okay, that's enough. We don't want to do this. Or yes, please keep moving forward. We'll keep checking in on this as we move forward. And again, looking for other people's money, uh, specifically the state, um, and the federal dollars. So the last group of projects here should be no surprise to you. And I mentioned these earlier. These are the seven projects from Sound Transit. Um, a lot of this work is occurring. Well, it's all work is occurring within a half mile of the Lakewood Sounder Station. Um, we are looking right now, and I'm proposing that our first two projects we work on is a Hundred and Twelfth Street from Gravel Lake Drive to Bridgeport. Let's finish that. We already did some sidewalks by the high school. Um, I want that to be the first big project that, that comes out of the gate. And then because it's a big project, I'm proposing that we do the Clover Creek Railroad Crossing as the second project. Now, Sound Transit will do all the work within the railroad right of way and will do on either end. And this is a pedestrian safety project, for those who aren't familiar with it. After that, uh, we're looking, proposing that McCord Drive, which is a big project.
Quick question here. Mr. Bokey, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, they're just working on curb gutter sidewalk, pedestrian amenities?
Within the right, within their, uh, railroad right of way. I'm sorry.
Okay, but when you talk about a hundred, let's go back to a hundred and twelve.
Yeah.
What are they gonna do?
Oh, we're gonna do curb gutter sidewalk, bike lanes, road surface, street lights as appropriate and improvements to the storm drainage.
And are they paying for all that or are we kicking in to do?
They're paying for it all as is proposed right now.
Okay. So right now there's, so they're even gonna redo the paving and everything? Oh, wow.
They're paying for it.
Great, thank you.
In fact, um, they're paying a hundred percent of all of them. McCord Drive is a big one. That's gonna go from a Pack Highway all the way to Bridgeport. And then we have a couple of smaller ones, a Hundred and Fifteenth Street, Court Southwest. And along with these, there's some other minor things that will be incorporated in some of these projects. I, I didn't list them separately because they're small and they'd be wrapped in some of the bigger projects, such as, uh, right now at Bridgeport and, and Pack Highway, the bus is coming in and hanging a right up Bridgeport. Uh, it's challenging for them to make that. So I said that we'd be happy to take, take on the improvements right in there. The advantage to Sound Transit is, is if it's in our right of way, we have complete control. Um, we don't need to issue ourselves permits. And we have the flexibility of being able to work under the franchise agreements with any utility that is in conflict to the road project. And then we have a series of other projects, uh, Forty-seventh Avenue from Pack Highway by the Sounder Station, Forty-seventh that goes up across the freeway and then all the way to the dead end at Clover Creek. So the concept on this one is we're gonna do the curb gutter and sidewalk on the roadway, but not where it crosses with the freeway. Sound Transit's gonna do the engineering design and pay for that for improving, improving the roadway and the sidewalk there to get people across. And we're only gonna be able to do one side because that's a pretty old structure. That's pretty expensive to do a lot of these modifications to. The cost estimate that we developed with them also takes into consideration the new development that was proposed and is in fact being built out there. So it's gonna be private sector doing their responsibility for the frontage improvements and half roadway improvements. And then for those areas that are already pre-existing developed, where we don't have a hook to get anybody to go do these improvements, Sound Transit will be funding and we'll be doing the design and construction on that. The one big one that seems to be missing right now that years ago when we had this conversation is the work on the, the county pit, former pit site. I don't see that one developing until we figure out what to do with the floodplain issue. Because so much of that site is covered with floodwaters. If we can move forward with a levy and make that happen, then it's more likely that we're gonna see that development activity move forward.
You talking about the Pierce County property over there?
Yes.
It's under contract.
I would love to see it being developed, in which case even sooner than, than I thought. They'll be doing the road curb gutter and sidewalk, that very long portion on that side of the road.
Because it's under contract with Panatoni. So that if it closes by the end of this year, then you'll see some development activity again.
That would be terrific.
Yep.
Terrific. And then the last one is, uh, Lincoln Avenue. It goes through, uh, a portion of the Springbrook area that ties between San Francisco Avenue and, um, McCord Avenue. Those are all the, the tier one projects. The tier two projects are the projects that go Boston and a couple of the other roads in that, which I can't remember the names of them off the top of my head right now. But all the cross streets that tie into Lincoln. And then it also includes the project, um, out by the, the high school right off a Hundred and Twelfth, Davison and a couple of others. Those are, there's a number of ti- um, tier two projects that we'd be able to build. And again, it's with Sound Transit money. I will tell you though, is if it looks like things are getting tight, we do have availability to tap some of the surface water utility funds because typically we use that for curb and gutter and then the storm drainage. But our goal right now is to be able to bring these projects in at a cost effective rate that we don't have to touch any of the city funds to get this done. With that, if you take a look at the very bottom, over the next three years, we're looking at, um, almost sixty-seven million dollars of transportation, stormwater and sewer work. If you add in another one point six million dollars for the annual capital programs, which is not included in that, the numbers get just a little bit larger. This is a large body of work. And we're, we're, we're working hard at, at delivering this program. Do you have any further questions for me tonight? What I would like to do is if we could bring up the graphic real quick. And I don't know which one you've got. There it is. So to give you an idea, across the city of Lakewood, over the next couple of years, everyone is gonna feel a little bit of the joy of our work. Uh, this doesn't show the, the street light program. It's just, before long, I just said, stop. It's just gonna clutter everything up too much. Besides the street lights, you're hanging lights on poles. It's really not that big of an impact. Chip seal, pavement patch, pavement patching isn't shown either because every year about this time, uh, staff go out and we start looking for where the potholes are created, where the delaminations have occurred. So it's really subject to what the winter has been like every single year, where the traffic impacts have been every single year. So you won't see that, um, for the next three years laid out for us. But it is a body of work that we will be doing.
It's a lot of great work. Big improvements, for sure. Any questions, Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Bucic, for your presentation. Um, couple, uh, well, one question. Does the city allow or require pervious pavement in any, like, local roads or anything?
Our soils are so loose, they infiltrate so well that no one has asked us to build pervious pavement. Pervious pavement has an initial higher upfront costs. And it's cheaper for the developers and others to basically just build the standard asphalt roadways and put infiltration galleries. Pervious pavement has its place. Uh, typically shared use path or a bike path off of the roadway is a great application for it. But what we're discovering is that if the conditions aren't right for pervious pavement, whether it's be asphalt or concrete, what you will find is that you get excessive moss growth. And if you don't keep up on the maintenance, then you'll find that, uh, the pores start to get plugged with leaf litter that gets ground into it. My history with pervious pavement goes back into nineteen ninety-eight when I worked for Pierce County. And I wrote the first stormwater manual and put in the allowance for pervious pavement and allowed for Pierce County Parks to put in the pervious pavement on the Ordin Trail. So I've got a long history with both asphalt and concrete. When I first came here, I started asking Mary and a few others, why, why isn't Lakewood using pervious pavement? Um, and they said, well, you know, because everything just infiltrates into the ground already. And so there's not a lot of value to the developer or to the community to do that. So that's why. Is it allowed? We consider it in the right application? Is it something we push for, particularly?
Okay, great. Yeah, I, I know a lot of, a lot of jurisdictions are moving away from it on roadways. So that, yeah, it works fine for sidewalks and pathways, but yeah.
I would not use it for roadways.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, and then I was gonna add this to my council comments, but it seems fitting to talk to you about it. So I went to, uh, PSRC meeting with Jeff, Josh Brown, Jeff Brown, Josh Brown. Um, and he had, he had mentioned that, well, in, in the January meeting, the, uh, regional scoring framework was adjusted to provide, you know, how projects get selected based on the scoring categories. So the scoring categories changed pretty significantly on a couple of them. Um, the air quality and climate change was drastically, uh, the, the percentage points that, you know, is, that they use is, was really increased for that, uh, more than two times what it was. And then also, um, the safety. And he said that, uh, jurisdictions that have a, um, I think it's like a public, let's see, it was a transportation safety plan? So I just was curious, do we have a transportation safety plan?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Um, yeah, so it's just gonna be maybe different, uh, you know, being competitive for some of these funds, you know, kind of showcasing. You actually mentioned a couple of the things tonight with the roundabouts, the air quality, you know, the client, you know, so some things like that and safety with the. and safety with the roundabout. So hopefully those score well if we're going after funds for those types of projects, so.
For every project we go after, we have to show them that we have evaluated or considered the use of a roundabout.
Yeah. And then, yeah, that was it, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions, Mr. Busic? Oh, Mr. Branstad.
I had a question about streetlights. On your plan of construction and then, and you have some things that relate to streetlights, but whereas the chip seal is 24, 25, and 26, streetlights are only 24 and 25. Are we gonna be essentially done with getting everything lit?
We're done with all the easy ones. The ones that are yet to be explored further is the neighborhoods like Oak Brook where everything is underground. And putting the streetlights in that area is gonna be extremely expensive. So that's part of our work plan this year is to start meeting with the HOAs out there to talk to them about streetlights, also talked about pedestrian paths. As you know, well know that the Onyx project built curb gutter sidewalk, streetlights all the way to the park, and then going the other way all the way to Phillips. That was a great project. The question though becomes, is that the nature of the project that is appropriate for the residential neighborhood and the rest of the streets going through there? And that's part of the conversation with the folks who live out there that we want to have.
So we've got a plan for 24 and 25. And then after that, it's somewhat of an infill problem of where should there be streetlights or if we had dealt with the one neighborhood in Oak Brook or not. And then we have a lot of private streets that have, you know, they're not city rights of way, and so streetlights for their, them are a a homeowners association issue and expense?
Correct. On the private roadways, that's the responsibility of the property owners and the HOAs to light up their streets. There's a couple of other areas on the north part of the city where everything is underground, it's underground power. So if you recall, one, the original development for Oak Brook, we were gonna go put in some wooden poles and streetlights, and the residents didn't like that even though there were wooden poles out there. So we canceled the contract and told the contractor, thank you, no thank you, we're not gonna move forward with that because they wanted to have the same underground power and metal poles like Onyx received.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like that's it. We appreciate the significant overview and obviously the good work. Lots of great projects for the city.
Thank you.
A few more updates, Mayor, Council. I'll try to make it quick. First off, I just want to recognize the Parks Department and the Public Works Engineering Department for the work that they do. You know, you probably heard me say this before, truly transformational in our community.
Absolutely.
And also the scope, the size, and the number of the projects that are done here in Lakewood are really unprecedented, you know, compared or benchmarked to other cities of not just similar size, but even larger and certainly smaller. And, you know, that all starts with you. It's a reflection of the direction that you provided and the resources that we have available. But at the end of the day, it's, you know, the sweat equity that our team is doing day in and day out to really bring these projects and improvements forward. Along those lines, I wanted to recognize our Finance Division. For the 10th year in a row, they were recognized and awarded a from GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And again, for the 10th year in a row, this is a tremendous and very prestigious accolade and is a testament to the hard work and dedication and professionalism of not just our finance team, but really all of our city employees and the city council as it relates to not just our financial reporting, but also the transparency and our ability to effectively communicate our financial standings. And I will also say that we are only one of literally a handful of cities and towns in Washington State that get this recognition. And I think it's less than 2% nationwide actually get this recognition. At the same time, it is getting harder and harder because GASB keeps making, and GASB is the governmental accounting standard boards, and they keep raising the bar, if you will, on financial reporting. Some of it, quite frankly, that we don't understand, but sometimes, you know, we just have to move forward with whatever accounting changes that we have to do. And again, it's a testament to our finance team and the leadership of our Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, Todd Kraus. On Friday, we learned on Friday, early afternoon or so, and this is something that we're still tracking down, is that apparently the state building code council moved forward with some kind of an emergency rule that we understand perhaps removed any changes to the wild urban interface or the WUWE code. You might recall that this was a point of discussion at your March 4th meeting. And at that point in time, there was a bill making the way through the state legislature that would have provided direction to the Department of Natural Resources. So what we, again, what we understand, and we got some follow-up work here to do, is that they completely removed that from the code. That's our understanding. I'm not saying that that's what happened, that's our understanding. If in fact that's the case, it is likely our recommendation would be that there's no need to put that in the code, and we would be back in front of you to have that removed from our code since it's no longer needed. And basically, that part of the code would revert back to the 2018 International Building and Fire Code. So I would just say probably more to follow there. I understand earlier today that Mayor Wayland received a request from one of our state representatives, Representative Levitt, to provide a legislative updated upcoming city council meeting. If the city council wanted to do this, this could easily be accommodated as part of your April 22nd study session. You have very full agendas leading up to that. The April 22nd agenda is one that we could move some things out. We understand that she would like to do it before early May, so again, this would be a time to do it. The city council, you could also choose to invite all of your other state legislators to this meeting on April 22nd as an opportunity for them to provide an update as well. Or you could choose a date, so, you know, sometime later this spring to do it. So Mayor, I'll leave it with you. But again, if you wanted to move forward with this particular request, my recommendation would be April 22nd, again, based on your agenda and what you have, what you have going on. Also, earlier today, the city council, you received an email from County Councilmember Marta Campbell, who serves as the Chair of the Pierce County Select Committee on Homelessness. And they have been having, the county, the county representatives on this committee have been having a conversation with the city of Tacoma and a couple of their council members, basically addressing how regionally to address the issue of homelessness. They are now reaching out to Lakewood and Puyallup, and they're asking for one or two members of the council to participate and to attend their meetings. Their meetings are in the middle of the day, they're on the second and fourth Wednesday of every month at 1:30. They can either be done in person or virtually. But again, if either, any of you have a desire to participate in that, you know, let us know, and we'd be more than happy to respond on your behalf. Or if you'd like, certainly, you could reach out to the Chair, County Councilmember Marta Campbell. But again, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Mr. Branstad wanted to address that real quick.
In that particular request, with a Puyallup and a Lakewood representative, they said that they could attend as non-voting members, but is but is Tacoma, Tacoma City Council members voting members?
I do not know, Councilmember. All I know is what was sent over to us.
Yeah, I see. It seemed more of symbolism than allowing us to have a role of substance. So I'm not interested.
Are you gonna go to that one? Would you like to be? Oh, just checking. Okay, we'll talk about that when we get to council comments. You might want to go.
Roger that, Mayor. Also, I just wanted to give you a heads up that, you know, we work very closely with JBLM on a number of issues, including helping transitioning veterans get into, you know, the, you know, area of jobs, particularly with a focus on local government. And I'm pleased to announce that we are gonna be bringing on a fellow through ICMA's Veteran, ICMA's International City County Management Association, which is my professional organization, a Veterans Local Government Management Fellow. And she is a captain, a senior captain, over eight years in the military. And so she'll be spending, at this point in time, four months, potentially six months with us, beginning in early April. She has an interest in communications and human resources, and then perhaps some other areas. And then, you know, our commitment to her is to help her, you know, find other cities, you know, where she could potentially find employment, or if we have an opportunity here, you know, she would be able to compete there as well. You know, in the past four or five years, we've had several other fellows, so it's been a very successful program. And we're one of the communities that, you know, it seems that, you know, these folks, they like to come and work with, and we're very supportive of them. So again, just wanted to just give you a heads up on that. As it relates to upcoming events, the artist reception was very, very successful today. The artist Ron Snouden was there, had a chance to talk to him. His art is hanging, if you haven't had a chance to look at it. It's absolutely wonderful. So this was the first quarter artist reception. So second quarter artist reception will be in two weeks. So, I'm sorry, Councilmember?
I think that they rescheduled it.
Oh, did they?
Something that came across, they mentioned it, so I think.
Okay, I heard a little bit ago, April 15th. So, because I was like, wait a second, oh yeah, that's second quarter.
The April one, I think, is rescheduled.
Yes, okay, all right, so. And then on Wednesday, in the afternoon, at the lunch hour, there's the annual meeting of the EDB for Tacoma Pierce County. I know a number of us are attending that. And then later that evening, there's the private screening of the quote "student voice on fentanyl awareness" unquote over at the AMC Theater that's being sponsored by the School Superintendent's Youth Advisory Council. And I think at that, I'll leave it at that. So back to you, Mayor.
Very good. On the Rep. Levitt question on the 4/22, you know, I'd be inclined to give her a few minutes, that date. Does it make good sense for us to send an invitation out to all of them? They may not show, other than Rep. Levitt. At least we have done our sort of inclusive overture. If that makes some sense. She'd probably be the only one, maybe Rep. Bronski would come as well.
We could certainly do that, Mayor, just need to know from the council.
Yeah, let's just do that.
Okay.
We'll set it up, tell her that's the date, advisor, that we're gonna, you know, open it up to everyone who reps Lakewood's interests, and they can tell us all the good things that they did to support the community's goals.
Roger that, okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any else? Any questions for Mr. Coffield on that? Okay, let's go to council comments. We do have an exec session afterwards, so be mindful of that. And we'll start with Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am planning on attending the EDB meeting Wednesday, and then also the student voice on the fentanyl later that evening. And I overheard Ron Banner talking to my wife about this event, and that they were trying, the Clover Park School District was trying to get some local and national news to cover this showing. And so there might be, I think it's supposed to be pretty heavily attended, and some news folks may show up or may not, so, as well as some state representatives. So I think that'll be a good event, and that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add to that, I really thought that the presentations tonight were very informative and really exciting. Actually, there's a lot coming up that I think we have a lot to be excited about in Lakewood. It's always great to see Casamia, a local business, being showcased, and I love seeing the videos of them talking about their business. And yes, the artist reception was tonight, and I really think that our Arts Commission has done a really good job of bringing in art and really creating a place where now we're starting to get known for having art shows, and we're looking into all of how we're gonna feature them in the future. And so that's also very exciting. And last week, I was able to attend Deputy Mayor Moss's wonderful gala for LMCC, and it was a really great night, a great event. And I think that you were able to meet a lot of goals that you needed. So that was a really good time. So thank you.
Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo what others have said and thank all of our presenters tonight, specifically between our Parks Department and our Transportation Department. It sounds like there's nearly $100 million worth of projects in work, which is very significant for a city of our size. One point that is where parks and streets intersect is our lakefront street ends. And I learned that that was, access to our lakes was something that was very important to General Harrison as they established Lakewood, and that's something that I look forward to seeing us improve for all of our residents. And with that, I'm also looking forward to our retreat here in a week and a half to talk about our goals for the next couple of years and hearing everyone's voice. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I was I was able to attend the 100th year centennial of the American Lake VA Hospital campus. That the mayor spoke, and he spoke very well about it. And the main thrust of the event was a very personal recognition to seven 100-plus-year-old veterans who were there. And it was done very well with a great deal of respect. And surprisingly, those veterans themselves were actually quite spry. You know, some of them were wheeled onto the stage, but some sprang up the steps and were there and were able to do that. And they were all going off. And so it was a it was a ceremony well worth attending, and it was, the mayor's remarks were unique in that we were the only local municipal government that even put in any attendance at all, much less speaking.
Thank you. Councilmember Boki.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Enjoyed the LMCC event, well done. Good time, I think, was had by all. I'm sure you'll speak more to it, Deputy Mayor Moss. TCRC meeting this week? Mayor?
I may have a conflict, but we'll chat about it.
Well, I'm planning, I mean, it's still on Zoom, so I'm planning to be there. There's one, one action item, and that actually has to do with regional transportation. And they've got some CMAC, which was mentioned, that we have a hard time winning for some projects, Auburn, Fife, Pierce County, which is 112th Street, Port of Tacoma, Puyallup Avenue, and Sumner. So I'm not sure how this fits into the regional competition which we're now in. So I have to read this a little bit more closely because there is a letter that came from the TCC Chair, which is the, the TCC is the staff that goes through these. So I think we're okay, but I'll probably send it to Mr. Busic to take a look at. And beyond that, I'm planning to be at the EDB thing on Wednesday.
Very good.
And I'll leave it at that, thank you.
And you're at the gala on Friday, so thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I also, I'm planning next week that I'll probably zoom in.
Okay.
I don't know yet, but I'm I don't know yet, but I'm gonna, but assume that I'm gonna Zoom in.
Very good. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do plan to attend the EDB luncheon on Wednesday. And I had an opportunity to walk through the art program show this afternoon for you. The, the art gets more and more interesting. I'm beginning to understand art a little bit, guys, I'm impressed. And as for the LMCC gala, I just have to say thank you guys so much. I had a lot of fun, my goals were met. And I'm, I'm just excited that the people feel the way they do about coming to the events. One of, some of the questions that I, or comments that I got was, they wanted me to take our program, the LMCC program, to other communities. And I invited them to come to ours, but didn't see us taking it out, out of the city. So, but it was good, because even the MC was saying, this is what most communities need, is to bring the communities together and get back into celebrating each other. So I'm happy to do that, and I thank you guys for supporting me in that, too. My brother, I took them for a ride around, and they, it was interesting how they pointed out, oh, we're not long in Lakewood, are we? What do they know about Lakewood or whatever? But they noticed a difference. And what they said was, the streets. So they know, it's noticeable. And I was spreading my chest a little bit. He enjoyed meeting all of you that he had an opportunity to meet. So it was great. Next year, it is on a Saturday, March 8th, at the McGavick Center. And it's going to start at 6 o'clock. And we're gonna do a lot, well, each year we do something different. Each year we learn more and more about how, what people like and what they act, react to, and whatever. So I'm just, I'm just jazzed, I'm jazzed. So thank you guys so much for your support, thank you.
Very good. My arm hurts already from being twisted a year in advance. So that's good. Yeah, exactly. Very good. Well, I, I just want to echo the accolades for the presentations tonight on both Parks and Public Works. And exactly right, we're nearing $100 billion of investment, which is a huge milestone for this community. We've done a lot in the last few years, but I mean, the, the projects going forward are absolutely huge for this community. And I, I'm hopeful that people recognize the hard work of, of staff that goes into it. And I'll certainly make sure I trumpet that when we go out to the Neighborhood Association meetings and remind them of the very fine work that continues to go on day in, day in, day out, day in, day out. The one public comment about the meeting minutes actually made some sense to me tonight. Not that the others didn't, but I think perhaps having some, as we used to, kind of brief comment about the subject matter of the commenter would probably make some sense. On those, I, I recognize the need to be brief, and the requirement doesn't have to have significant detail. But maybe commenter A discussed X is probably fine, generic. Yeah, it doesn't have to be very detailed. But let's talk about that, but I think that makes some sense to me. Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, I, I, I do think that it would be good for the minutes to include at least some comment about what was the subject matter that a person spoke to. But I also think that when it was a result of whether the comments related to being either pro or con, should be noted, rather than just that they, they talked about the residential building, be able to go and do that. But I, I, I guess, you know, we made this change in this format of the minutes in response to the couple of meetings of where we had people where we were disappointed in the, in the subject matter that they wanted to discuss. So recognize that if we go back to doing that, and although that, that has not proved to be a recurring pattern, such then, you know, that, recognize that should there be comments of that nature, again, we would be, be saying they spoke about the, you know, the, the, the War of the Worlds or whatever.
Well, I think that we can do both, because I think we're on track when we annotate a commenter from South Dakota that may speak to matters not on the agenda or pertaining to city business. I think that's appropriate. And I think a basic subject matter for those that are speaking to matters on the agenda or related to city business, I think that would be appropriate. That's my thought. You guys okay with that? Or maybe we can get some more lead from the city attorney? Because we used to have a little bit more descriptive comments.
I appreciate that, and we also had a lot more debates all week long from the people who didn't like what we said they said.
Oh.
So I'm just gonna leave it at that. This is the province of the city clerk and exclusively the province of the city clerk.
Do you actually get a lot of feedback on this?
Uh huh. All from a few people, but yes.
Okay.
It, it happens that people like to see what they want to see in the minutes, and it's actually the province of the city clerk. If you feel that the minutes don't reflect what actually happened, that's something different, and that is the province of the council to ratify those minutes. But we sometimes get into the business, and particularly people who aren't as versed in the meetings, when they see what they actually said, they don't want to see what they actually said. They want to see what they thought they said, or they wish they'd said.
I guess I'm thinking maybe more generically that Speaker X spoke about, spoke favorably about the park projects, period, something like that.
And until that's not what their intention was. I'm, I'm just saying you're, you're going to a slippery slope. The, the rule for minutes is-
The best intentions.
Yes, best intentions. The minutes are supposed to be action minutes. What actually happened, what actions the council took. The city clerk is determining what's in the best reflection of what happened in the meeting. And there is the availability of the video. Somebody wants to see exactly every word that was said, they can see it there. Obviously, I respect the will of the council. I would, however, in, in more difficult conversations that one has to have with the council sometimes, taking the minutes is not your role. Ratifying the minutes is your role. Saying that, yes, this is, this is generally the business that was conducted. Obviously, that can be an ongoing conversation through the city manager. But ultimately, the duty of minutes is within the province of the city clerk.
Mr. Bokey?
Yep, I was understood from my day, my day job that the, the minutes are action items, that the idea is discussion ensued, vote was taken, vote passed. We even do voice votes, so we're not even on the record, right? So, and unless we, unless we call for a division. So it's, it's, they're action items, because for the, for that taken, I mean, every volunteer board I'm on, they're always trying to do verbatim. And of course, every next meeting then gets into, well, I didn't say that, I said this. And I, I was even, mind, that goes way too long. But a lot of discussions ensues about the minutes. And the Paul Bokey rule of thumb is if a board starts debating minutes, it's a dysfunctional board. So just, that's just my advice for the evening, because, because that's what happens. They, they, because people are trying to keep the minutes, and they've invariably, in a two-hour meeting, aren't gonna get everything, right?
Well, I think we're maybe doing it, so maybe there isn't much change to be made. As I'm re-reflecting on this, I see the meeting minutes say, resident spoke about motion 2024-16 and motion 2024-17, and that's probably fine. And the other one was the commenter from Sioux Falls spoke about topics not on the agenda, which I think is also fine. So, okay, so maybe we're not in need of a fix. Okay. Thursday, I attended the Lake City Neighborhood Association meeting. Mr. Branstadter was there as well, and it was fairly well-attended. I thought they brought up some good comments. We had plenty of city staff representing the city there that was able to address various issues that were brought forward. So that was a good meeting. As Mr. Branstadter indicated, we did attend the event at the VA Medical Center on Friday. I just want to echo that it was a really well-done event. I think it was appreciated that we were there. I didn't realize the nature and extent that they were going to honor the seven centenarians, but that was a big focus of the entire evening. But it was amazing to see all of the gentlemen and their background and the stories. So I'm very heartfelt, well done. LMCC, we talked about that. Thank you again, Deputy Mayor, for putting that on for the community, well done. Wednesday, I'll be at the EDB lunch. I'll do the Student Voice on Fentanyl later that afternoon and evening. I will not probably be able to do the PCRC meeting, so I'll talk to you, Mr. Bokey, about that. And then, yeah, I think we've got a back alternative with Mr. Laura Sella, potentially. So anyway, lots of stuff going on this week, for sure, for all of us. So thank you for your attention tonight. We will now recess into executive session for about... Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for interrupting, but I wanted to let you know that I got some misinformation on the dessert dash, so we do not have a final count on what we received for the desserts from, from the gala.
Okay, very good. Yeah, we'll put that in the minutes. Yeah. Yeah, put that in the minutes. Right. So we will recess into executive session for 15 minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101B to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate, and for an additional 15 minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101I to discuss with legal counsel litigation or potential litigation. We're not expected to take any action following the executive session other than to come back and to adjourn the meeting. So at this point, we'll be in recess. So at this point, we'll be in recess.